Welcome to the City Council's May 26 City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. First, we'll start off with roll call. I would like to introduce staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include our City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, interim City Attorney Kara Silver, and City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council, and thank you to all of our members.
Ms. Heron, you're...
Is my microphone okay? Wonderful, thank you. So again, just welcome everyone for attending, and thank you for attending the May 26 City Council Meeting. Thank you guys for being patient as we worked on our side of things over here. At this time, I would like to ask that the City Council remain on the screen and control their own webcams and microphones. City staff will engage their webcams and microphones for presentations and to answer any questions for the City Council. When the mayor calls for a public comment on an agendized item, at that time, members of the public can engage the raised hand feature. It looks just like a little hand, it's to the right side of your screen, but you'll click that, I'll be able to open up your microphone, and you will have the opportunity to address the City Council for your public comment. That is all from me, and I return the meeting to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any information items that the City Council would like to pull for discussion? Councilmember Nash?
I'd like to pull G1 and G4, please.
Councilmember Nash, you said G1 and G4? Okay. Are there any other questions from council?
If I may, Madam Mayor, I think the question was information items, and then we were going to move on to consent items. So G1 and G4 are information items.
Unfortunately, I didn't hear anything you just said.
Oh. I'll try again.
My guess is going to be that the City Manager just stated it's not informational, it's consent.
Or reverse, I think we were trying to find out if you were trying to pull any, or if you had questions about information items, and then we'd move on to consent items.
Are there any questions on informational items? And the informational item that's on there is the City Council Agenda Topics for June 2020 to July 2020. All right, well, we'll move on to the consent calendar. So Councilmember Nash wanted to pull G1 and G4. Councilmember Mueller?
Mayor Taylor, before we go to consent, we do need a report out from closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, for the reminder. Ms. Silver or Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, do you want to do the report out from closed session?
Yes, Mayor Taylor, there's no reportable action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, just real quick before we move on away from the informational items, not included in the tentative City Council Agenda, packet at this time is the design of the downtown social distancing project. I realize that won't be ready in early June, but I do hope that something we could take up by the end of June.
So I think we are trying to, I'm not sure I'm talking about the same project, but we're trying to plan a study session with the Chamber of Commerce next Tuesday to talk about the closure of Santa Cruz. Is that the same issue, or are you talking about something else?
Yes, that's the same issue, downtown social distancing for shopping and restaurants.
Okay, so tentatively a study session next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I'm sorry, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Carlton is having some difficulty with her reception at this time. So we're going to go back to the consent calendar. Councilmember Nash, you pulled item G1.
Yes, so, thank you. For the minutes on April 28, I'm looking at page G1.18, and two comments about this are, "The City Council discussed future use of rubberized asphalt and requested staff return in the future to provide policy direction on paving projects before they are awarded next fiscal year." I believe we actually wanted to have a discussion before they were bid, not before they were awarded, so earlier in the process? If that's a distinction that's necessary.
That is the consensus of the council, the minutes can be updated.
I'm sorry, I had trouble, I didn't hear any of that. Can you repeat it really quickly? I apologize, I'm having trouble with sound. Judy, do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I apologize.
So the council minutes for April 28, 2020, this is page G1.18, currently state, "The City Council discussed future use of rubberized asphalt and requested staff return in the future to provide policy direction on paving projects before they are awarded next fiscal year." And I wanted to make sure that it was earlier in the process before they are bid.
I support it.
Why not?
I can make that amendment to the minutes, thank you.
Thank you. And then one other comment is, right below that, it says, "Staff was directed to return the capital improvement plan as part of the 2021 budget item after exploring alternatives to repurpose additional projects that are not categorized as requisite or no progress is anticipated next year." My understanding, I believe we gave a unanimous clear decision that everything was on the table, not just projects that were categorized as requisite or no progress. Basically, I thought that we gave direction to have all the projects on the table and to have them all explore alternatives for all of them.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash, I can confirm with the video and get back to you offline.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just one other comment, it was a tremendous amount of work, all these minutes, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Nash, just for clarity, it was G1 and G4 for you?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and I am also having some difficulty, so I'm only hearing part of what has been said. I may need to turn my camera off just to see if I would have better reception, so if I'm not here, I'm still here. But I had a question actually on G2 and G3. G2 approved a one-year extension of the agreement with the County of San Mateo Animal Control Services. I'm not sure if anyone on staff can answer this question. I had an incident where there was a, unfortunately, a poisoned opossum underneath my car, and the animal control would only take the animal if it had already deceased. And so is there a way, if the animal is sick, that there can be some other language added there, that they would still pick up the sick animal, that the animal did not have to be deceased? So I don't know who to pose that question to, but if that language can be added, that's possible?
We can reach out to the Humane Society on that. I think this is the language that's being presented to the council tonight, and forms across all cities in San Mateo County, so having individual changes will be very difficult. But I understand your concern, and we can follow up with them to see what can be done.
Okay, thank you. And then item G3 is receive and file the quarterly financial report. My question is, and I had this when it came up a couple weeks ago, just for any item that has miscellaneous, if it could be more detailed to be specific about what the miscellaneous is. And I think Mr. Jacobson, I don't remember his answer to that, but just wanted to find out if that's possible. I cannot hear you. Let me...
I apologize, that was on my end, I was muted.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Dan Jacobson, Assistant Administrative Services Director. Just to clarify, are we talking about the other category in Table 1?
What page are you referring to?
This is page G3.3. So it shows up in both 3.4 and the consolidated one, 3.3. So this category is actually only donations, I believe, so all of the other categories that had been rolled up into the other category in the previous budget discussions have been broken out, those are things such as franchise fees, licenses and permits, so all of those ones have largely been broken out. We do combine just the smaller, very small categories in order to not have the table hundreds of lines long.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. That was my only question. The next item is G4, adopted resolution for preliminary approval of an engineering report. Councilmember Nash, you pulled this.
Thank you, I did. My question was about Table 1, where there's, well, actually, I guess it's a more overall question. Basically, why are we using general funds when there's a fund balance left? And in this current state of, with the economy, would it not be better to zero out the fund balance before we dip into the general fund? And that is true both for the tree maintenance and for the sidewalk assessments.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Taylor, can you all hear me? I'll just pause for a second first, okay. So my name's Nikki Nagai, I'm the Public Works Director for the city. So that's a great question, and something that we were quite frankly struggling with as we prepared this, with the uncertainty of next fiscal year. And so what's presented before you for G4 is a maximum contribution from each of the funding sources. We would absolutely use the fund balance before we make a general fund transfer, but we are concerned about some of the other revenue sources that help support these programs for next fiscal year, and are not certain what those revenue levels will look like for next year. So one in particular is Measure M that we use to support our street sweeping services as part of our stormwater pollution prevention control program. And so if those revenues are coming in low next year, we would need to tap more of the general fund monies for the planned transfer. So we're showing a maximum amount of each source, but we would only use those if needed if the revenues don't come in from the other sources as planned.
So I guess I'm still a little bit puzzled, and that's for the tree maintenance, the project projected ending fund balance is $318,747.34. The general fund contribution is $265,000, which obviously is well below the projected ending fund balance.
Right, so the concern is that Measure M revenues would be potentially lower if residents aren't paying property taxes next year, the assessment revenues could also come in low, and so we would need the general fund revenues to help support the planned service levels for next fiscal year accordingly. But we would use the fund balance remaining first before we would do that transfer, but that's showing a worst-case budget for each of the funding sources.
So in fact, the projected, you will actually zero out the fund balance before dipping into the general fund?
Well, we have also a minimum required fund balance to carry over year-to-year to ensure that it's never fully zero. I believe it's 10% across both the tree maintenance and the sidewalk repair program funds, so we would meet that minimum, but then the other amounts would be, could be flexible accordingly.
And 10% of what?
What we're required, according to the ordinance language that adopted the program, we're required to maintain a 10% fund balance year-to-year.
I'm sorry, I'm still, it's a 10% fund balance of, what is the 10% of?
Of the program costs. 10% of the program costs must be carried over for the next year.
Could we, I guess, just given, when do we get updates on this?
So there are three actions the council takes on this item each year. One is in the early part of the calendar year, January, February timeframe, where you set the procedure and start the process to create the engineer's report, this item before you tonight, and then there's a third action, levying the assessments as part of a public hearing, which is tentatively set for June 23. That's part of your action tonight would be to set the date for the public hearing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nagai. At this time, since we have not taken public comment, I would like to take it now. Ms. Heron, is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I did not receive any public comment on the consent calendar via the web form, so at this time, I invite all of our attendees who would like to make a public comment on the consent calendar, to use that hand feature in the far right corner of your screen. You can engage that, I can open up your microphone, and you can make your public At this time, I'm seeing no hands raised, so I believe we can close public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Councilmember Nash?
I was wondering if we could add something to the report or to the minutes that the fund balance will be kept at, or basically the use of the general...
Councilmember Nash, I'm unable to hear you. Councilmember Nash, we're unable to hear you. Councilmember Nash, you may be on mute.
I am sorry, yes, I sure was. So I would like to have recorded in the minutes, if possible, that we will use as little of the general fund as necessary to keep the projected ending fund balance at the required minimum level. And in the future, it would be really beneficial just during this, to have the mandated fund balances included as part of the staff report, please. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by City Councilmember Nash, a second by City Councilmember Carlton, to approve the consent calendar, including edits to the minutes and an inclusion of the fund balances stated by Councilmember Nash for G4. By roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash? Vice Mayor Drew Combs? Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Now we'll move on to regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. First item on the agenda is to update the City Council and public on COVID-19 health emergency and the city's response. To introduce this item is our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor.
... and introduce the staff.
Good evening, sorry to interrupt. So I just, I had a very quick, brief update for you tonight. I wanted you to know that we've been having parking issues at the Dwel Day Front Park. There seems to be a, and people are not following the direction to not park, so we've begun ticketing. We gave warning tickets for quite a few days, but that didn't discourage the illegal parking. I think, yeah, okay, and so then, in addition, we anticipate opening the library for pickup library books on June 2, so no entrance into the library itself, but we will allow patrons to make an appointment at a specific time based on an order, and they can then pick up their library books at that point. Third, we are working with Team Sheeper to reopen the pools, we're in active discussions. It will require an amendment to the existing contract, and we anticipate hopefully bringing that back to council for the June 9 meeting. We are actively working on reopening childcare, but as you are probably well aware, there are a number of issues that need to be addressed with that. And then we will, we are working to set up a June 2 study session with the City Council, with the Chamber of Commerce, to talk about specifically two issues. One, the subcommittee report on closing Santa Cruz Avenue that was brought forward by Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember Nash. And then secondly, evaluating the opportunities in a business task force for economic revitalization downtown and throughout the community.
Excuse me for one moment, Councilmember Carlton had a question.
I have to use my phone to call in now since my computer isn't working. I'm excited to hear that the pool is open, I think that's great. How early do you think the pool might be available for people to use?
Well, sometime, as soon as possible after the contract amendments are approved, which are scheduled for the 9th. So if, you know, if they're ready to go on June 10, then June 10.
And a follow-up question, is that both library facilities and both pools?
No, good question, so we don't have that worked out yet, to be honest, on the pools. And Bell Haven Library, the facility's closed, and so we are not providing services there until the school is reopened.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I had sort of an idea today, I would just want to talk to you all of this part of the agenda because it's COVID-19. It has a little bit to do with building community here within Menlo Park, but also revitalizing our businesses. I had this crazy idea today, and if you guys think it's crazy, you can tell me so, and I'm curious your staff's input, but I started thinking about, recently I did a panel on education, I had a huge turnout, and then huge turnout, people YouTube. I know our mayor has done a town hall and had huge turnout, and what it started getting me thinking about is that I think people still hunger for community in a big way, and there's like a, there's a hole sort of in the heart of the community right now that they can't gather together. And the idea that I had was making Wednesday night like Menlo Park Night, and using, and basically doing something with our restaurants, where if you, so our, we would use our city resources to do programming, like Wednesday night, there'd be like a, you know, Menlo Park singing sensation night, where there's a competition of people singing, and another night could be Menlo Park Battle of the Bands, and like Menlo Park, basically trivia night, but something that we could program that every Wednesday night, the city could join together online via the city website for this, which the city would host, but that the way that people would be able to participate was that if they, if they purchased something from a Menlo Park restaurant or a Menlo Park retailer the week before, they'd get the password to be able to come in and actually enjoy that evening's activities. So it's an idea out there, but basically what I'm trying to figure out a way is, is there something that we can do taking into account our ability to program via this technology that pulls the community together and also supports our local businesses? So I throw that out there tonight for you guys to think about, for staff to think about. It's not totally big yet, but it seemed like we were going to have an opportunity to talk about something like that, now would be the time to throw out an idea like that, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I support anything that looks at keeping our communities connected. And I wanted to know if Mr. Swagert was here, because I know that, I think Community Services is providing some activities, and I know Library Services as well, what Councilmember Mueller is talking about is slightly different, but just, I would love to hear staff's input.
Great, Madam Mayor, thank you for your question, and members of the council. So it's great, give an opportunity to plug, there are some things that we have been doing, if councilmembers are aware of that, we've been doing a number of virtual events, our bingo events have actually been sold out. In fact, we're having to increase our capacity for Zoom in order to do that. Our trivia night is coming up, plus we also have a number of other activities that we've been doing to engage the community. We've also been promoting local businesses downtown with gift card giveaways, so those are some of the things that we are currently doing right now, but of course, I'm jotting down notes with the requests here. We obviously need to take a look at the whole picture and see what's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Swagert. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, Derek, I'll follow up with you. I talked with a couple business owners today, and they were excited about the idea, they said they would absolutely give out passwords to things for, to, if there was an event taking place that was sort of related to business, where if you dined out that night by pickup, they got the password, they'd be super excited to be handing out the password to try to get capacity on Wednesday night to people to actually use the businesses.
Councilmember Nash?
So, sounds like a great idea, and I would expand it to, perhaps you've already been thinking about this, but I've had some concern by some of the businesses who are not right on Santa Cruz Avenue, and some of the ones who are not restaurants, so perhaps we could expand the idea to, if you were to purchase, even purchase a sofa, one of the people who's reached out, that they could then get a password that way. So really, yes, what you're talking about encompasses many of our businesses across the entire city as possible.
Yeah, absolutely, actually, it's funny, one of the businesses I talked to is downtown, so it's actually located in the Sharon Heights area, and they were like, yeah, we absolutely, like, business capacity is... absolutely, like, business capacity is way, business, business is way down, even on, even on takeout. It's down on everything. So it was like, is there something that we can do to spur people to get them? And I know everyone hovers for community, and we're giving it to them already in some services, but can we give them a little bit more to get them to start thinking local again?
I appreciate that, Councilmember Mueller. And would that be a part of the discussion for, on our study session with the Chamber of Commerce? Councilmember Nash, you had your hand up.
We could, we could take it up with them.
I'm sorry.
Honestly, we could take it up with them. Cecilia, I wanted to raise the idea tonight because, just to give staff and everyone a heads up of the idea, I think we should, we can give it to Derek and, Derek and his team some time, some time to flesh it out, as they always do, and then share, share a little bit more with the Chamber of Commerce during our study session. Sure, that'd be great.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. If, I wanted to go back on to the libraries and question whether it's possible to do something over in the Bell Haven neighborhood. Either, I don't know if there's been a reach out yet for the library, whether or not we can utilize the schools, even if the schools are not open. But it also occurs to me that we've got the Childcare Center, which was not being used for childcare. So perhaps that could be used as a place to organize the book, handing out books for, so people don't have to drive across town. And just, what is the situation right now with the library? I guess, what is the situation right now with the library and the schools? And can we do something, or from the Bell Haven?
Well, we could, one thing we could look into is mailing books, which we were doing previously. So that would, that would be, enable us to get books to the families who were unwilling to drive over to the City Hall in Bickham. And we can explore other opportunities, too.
So is there an opportunity that, that there is a book pickup at the Bell Haven Community Library, or School Library? I forget the exact title. But is there opportunity to, for people to pick it up there as opposed to the mail or driving over to the main campus? And then if?
So I don't see the advantage, to be honest. I mean, I think we're not letting patrons into the library itself. So to me, it seems like it'd be more convenient if they just received it directly at home. But.
Well, should that be the same for the main library as well?
Oh, I think it would be less expensive to have people pick it up. We could look into, like, when, we can certainly look into options if you, if you feel it's important to have a pickup directly in the Bell Haven neighborhood. I think the dilemma is, we're not opening those buildings. But let's, we'll look into it and see what we can do.
We're just looking at how to do same service.
Okay, understood.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. And then one other question, and that was, if you are able to shed any light on the amendment to the contract for Team Sheepper, is that going to be include dollars, or is that just working through a change of venue, if you can comment on that?
I think it's in process. I mean, in part, it's going to depend on the council's final decision on whether to reopen the pool in the Bell Haven neighborhood or not. That's one of the contract amendments we'd be looking at, which we discussed at the last meeting. But there, there are a number of issues. We're just trying to get this wrapped up so we can get the pool open for, so that Team Sheepper can get the pool open. But we also need to look at what the financial structure of that would be.
Councilmember Nash?
So, thank you. So this is not specific to COVID. It also includes with the Bell Haven Community Center and what's happening in addition, the COVID?
It's a combination.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I understand that one of the, actually a couple of items on our budget list was to reduce services, but I am not in support of eliminating them, considering that exercise is important, reading is important, and so giving broader access to that, even if the library isn't open, that's, kids can come and pick up a book. So, so Starla, I didn't know if you were, had completed your update on COVID-19 for item H1.
I think I have, yes.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on regular business, to approve a resolution 6554, amending the city's record retention schedule. And this item was continued from May 12th.
Mayor Taylor, if I may, we will need to call for public comment on item H1, COVID update.
Thank you. Yes.
So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item H1, please engage that hand feature. It's to the right of your screen, and I will be able to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council. And seeing none, we can continue to the next item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Okay, moving to item H2. And that is approved resolution 6554, amending the city's record retention schedule. And Ms. Heron will introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, members of the City Council. Again, this item has been continued from the May 12th City Council meeting. I do not have a presentation, and all information has been provided in the staff report. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any questions from the council? And Ms. Heron, did we have any public comment on this item?
So again, we did not receive any web form public comment on this item. However, at this time, there's any member of the public who wishes to speak on item H2 regarding the records retention schedule, please engage that hand feature on the right side of your screen, and I'll be able to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council. It does look like I have one hand raised. Public commenter is going to be Adina Levin. Adina, I have unmuted your microphone. If you would like to address the City Council, you may at this time.
Hi, yes, Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. Sorry, I was trying to talk on the previous item, and I was about two feet away from my computer. So given the circumstance, if you say, does, is anyone want to address the council? If you could, like, wait for three seconds, that might help more of us be able to make that public comment. And the comment that I had, which I will bring back to the study session with the business community, is the idea of having, you know, community activities that can, you know, connect with people when we are in need of community, I think is really great. And I think that promoting it via the business community is terrific. And I also think that at a time of recession, when there are people that are unemployed and that have very tight budgets and are even, you know, food insecure, I think saying, well, you need to be able to afford to make a capital purchase of a sofa, is maybe not what we want to be communicating to our members of the community that want to be connecting with each other, regardless of how easy it is for them to spend money or not. And so I think that we should think some more and use that study session for ways that we can use this to promote the businesses amongst people that have the ability and interest in paying, without discouraging our people that want to participate in the community and are having economic hardship at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levin, for your public comment. And I do appreciate you reminding me to be patient when waiting for a public comment, as far as hands raised, since we can't see. So, thank you.
Yes, definitely. Thank you so much, Adina. I will give that time a little bit more. So again, we are on item H2, which is the records retention schedule. And I have one more public comment in queue. So again, for any member of the public who wishes to speak on Agenda Item H2, which is pertaining to the records retention schedule, please engage that hand feature on the right side of your screen, and I can open up your microphone. And at this time, I'm unmuting Pamela Jones. If you would like to address the City Council, you may at this time. And Pam, it looks like you are currently on mute. If you'd like to unmute yourself, you should be able to provide your public comment. She might have lowered her hand. So at this time, I have no further public comment on this item. Thank you.
Okay, I found, I found it.
Oh, there we go. We're back. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. I'm using my phone, and it's challenging. Thank you again, Judy and council. My comment regards to retention comes from being in professions that required you to save your documents for a minimum of seven years. And we found it useful in, with many of the documents, to keep them indefinitely. And moving over from paper to, to digital, did help make that, you know, work a lot easier, a lot less storage space, of course. My concern with letting go of records, destroying records, is being able to research city items. There's no way that you can find them unless there's some pot ink place that just happened to keep a few documents. So I would like for you to really consider what recommend, what records absolutely have to go, how you can digitize everything, and, and to consider all of those items that could possibly be, at a future date, be something that is litigated. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pamela, for your public comment. And I see no more hands raised. I return the meeting to Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And just as, as a, a follow-up, Councilmember Nash and I had a Subcommittee, I'm not sure if we had an official Subcommittee last year regarding the records retention. And I know that we met with Ms. Heron, and I believe our city attorney, possibly, or someone from the city attorney's office, just to talk about our concerns. And so at this time, since we didn't have the opportunity on May 12th to discuss this, I just wanted to follow up with Councilmember Nash to see where you are with record retention, and what's your suggestion as far as, what, what would you like to do?
Why don't I listen to your suggestions first? Very honestly, I, the digitizing really resonates with me. And we also have many challenges with our website and doing searches within the website. It's, we greatly need some, okay, so I'm looking at Councilmember Mueller. Yeah, who I think is having the same issue with trying to go back and locate documents on the website, even though I know they're there, is really, really challenging. So my, my concern is equally on the IT side as it is on the records and records retention side, would be my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And I, I share the same concerns around record retention. It would be great, and Ms. Heron, is it possible to have, I won't say, just for, for time's sake, is it, is it possible to have all records retained digitally if we had a small subset that we wanted to, to keep? So.
So yes, the City Council can retain records longer than is required by, say, the government code or the election code. We just can't retain for any less period of time. In regards to digitizing all records, I may refer to our city attorney on that to see what sort of legal questions that may arise from it. And there may be costs associated with boosting up our server to actually hold records indefinitely. It's amazing how many records we do have. And again, it's just an assumption that there may be no additional cost, but just something to consider. So Starla, if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to turn my cam off. If you can pop on and let me know, or let the City Council know, if there's any legal concerns with retaining indefinitely digitally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council, Cara Silver, interim city attorney. So primarily, it is, is just a resource issue. It's extremely difficult to digitize every single document that the city is in possession of. We have lots of different media forms available, and putting it into a single media form is very difficult. And then, of course, that media form is going to change over time. You know, it might be that website or web storage is the best right now, but of course, that will change. And it's very uncommon to have all documents in the city stored, just from a resource perspective. And then from a searchability perspective, it's, it's more difficult to search particular documents and weed through documents if everything is, is in the database. The, there are certain categories of documents, responding to Ms. Jones' suggestion as well, that are kept permanently. So all your standard types of documents that you would expect to be kept permanently are retained. So, you know, agenda packets, contracts, deeds, easements, elections, minutes, ordinances, all those types of really core documents are kept permanently, and we would expect that those documents would certainly be digitized. We've also identified other documents that are kept in their original form for a certain period of time, and then are digitized later and retained for an additional period of time. And then finally, in terms of legal concern about documents being, being retained through digital format, I think the legal concern is if we have, if we're in litigation and we have a discovery request, having to review that, that whole volume of, of documents and assure ourselves that all documents in, in the possession of the city have been turned over in response to a document request or a subpoena or a trial, that type of thing is, is very burdensome. And so again, it's from a practical standpoint, large organizations typically do not retain every single document.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Councilmember Nash?
I guess, so my main interest is the development document, develop, documents around the development, EIRs, things like that, which I think would be, you know, and then staff reports in minutes, things like this, where the, are the biggest focus for me. So I think those are all, would fall within items which the city would normally keep. It's just a matter of having them digitized and accessible.
Councilmember Carlton?
Thank you. I was just going to comment that there are some instances when it came to privacy, for example, with LPRs, where I remember Councilmember Mueller was one of the people that argued for it, that we would have only keep them for a certain period of time. And that was mostly, I think, decided for the security of the individual's privacy. And so some of it was a consideration on things that we approved in order to protect people, at least on the police side of, of like license plate readers, things like that. So I was just going to bring that forward as something to consider if we discuss this further.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in light of our current budget situation, it may make sense to consider highlighting the types of documents that there are colleagues who are interested in moving over to digitization and then asking staff to give us a cost estimate of what that would look like and then bringing it back to us to talk about it then. So.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. I did, another thing for consideration, I did speak to one staff member, I won't out that person, but the, the, the staff member was concerned about the amount of time it would take to deal with the changes and that they weren't opposed to doing it at all, but that possibly right now isn't fantastic timing. So just to consider that as we move forward on, on when it might be done and when we might address this.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'm not, I'm not against it yet. I'm not for it yet either. I appreciate the concerns. Like, for me, the key issue, especially right now and going forward with New Year, is going to be on those, on items that come up for consideration for vote. The, having the budget impact line of what that budget impact is, it's going to be like a key consideration. And we don't always have, we don't always have that, but, but I think that's actually something going forward in staff reports to see a line that says budgetary impact and, and then take the hours impact and translate to a budget impact. I think that's something that would be very helpful moving forward. So.
I, I agree, Councilmember Mueller. And I'm, I'm not sure if the item that was pulled off of the, the Budget Reduction List, if that's the right title, the data retention, there was an item around data retention and I asked to keep it on there because it provided transparency. This is what the, the police department. And so if I have the support of the council, I'm not sure if Councilmember Nash is still interested, but I would like the opportunity to go back and actually look at the notes as the reason why this item, for me, last year was flagged, because that still is, is relevant. And I do, I will take into account the cost that's associated with it. So it would be probably a minimal amount of, of retention, but I still would like the opportunity to at least, to address it before we approve destroying the records. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I'm not completely sure where we're headed on this, but just for transparency, I'm aligned with staff's recommendation. You know, at, at some points, records of a certain, you know, category should, should be destroyed. Every company or organization has a, a, a record retention policy, which, which is really a record destruction policy, right? I mean, there is tons of, and it's not maybe nice thing about, but liabilities that get associated with just having records around for an infinite amount of time. They might be discoverable, right? Which means that then the whole ordeal of having to produce records that you have for a very long time. So I generally, if we're, if there's a consensus that is, is, is contrary to staff's recommendation, then I'm fine with letting the council take that consensus or with getting sort of greater understanding around the, the cost. But, you know, as I sit here, I haven't had a scenario where someone has come to me and specifically said that, like, there is this one piece of information or data or documentation that would have provided a ton of insight that was destroyed and, 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 you know, not having access to it. And so again, generally, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of, of the, the recommendation. But again, if the colleague, my colleagues here want to see a, a different approach, then again, I'm, I'm, will be interested in, in sort of learning more about the, the cost and how a, a sort of a longer retention policy might work and, and what would specifically be the value add and how would we measure that value add, other than just the ability that we have these records for a longer amount of time?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I'll, I, I also, this evening supports staff recommendation, but I do want to be deferential to the mayor, who is the mayor, this time, to go back and take a look at if there was some policy thing from last year, she wanted to go back and revisit to allow her to identify what those documents are. But within a, within a finite amount of time for that identification. But then we do have a, I think we do have an obligation to, to, to then, you know, in our fiduciary responsibility, do the best practice getting rid of records. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Carlton?
I, I agree with Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Combs and, and Councilmember Mueller. It is standard practice in the planet to manage documents and not hoard everything. However, as, as always, even though I have an opinion going in, I'm always keeping an open mind. So if you come forward and say, there is that type of documents that we actually want to keep, I'm, I'm quite happy to listen to that. To, to Councilmember Mueller, but you're the mayor, I'm, I'm happy to listen to your ideas. But generally, as a, as an overview, I'm supportive of staff's recommendation, just because it's, it's the norm. And we, unless we want to get into running server farms, at some point, you have to strategically realize that you're not going to need that information anymore.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And, and I know, going back to, and it wasn't quite a year ago, that there, there was something specific that made me pull the item. And so in having further discussion, and I believe that, and Ms. Heron, I don't even know if you remember the conversation, it's been quite some time ago, but it was, it may have been an item that is only kept for one year and I think needs to be kept for two years. But it's definitely not something that I want, that's something that's supposed to be destroyed in five years and I want it in 10 years. It was something that the retention, the amount of time, to me, was, wasn't enough. So one year to keep documents, I think, for certain items is not enough time. Ms. Heron?
Yeah, so annually, we bring to City Council from my office a destruction list of records to be destroyed. It was that item where you and City Councilmember Nash had wanted to sit down and just kind of discuss what the records retention and schedule was, why documents were kept for a certain amount of time. There were, I think, a few that you had, you know, detailed out, saying, why do we keep it for this long or that long? Which is why we're bringing the records retention schedule as a regular item for discussion because of the interest of some members of the council in the records retention schedule itself. I do want to clarify that the proposed item this evening does not approve the destruction of any records. It's merely a resolution approving the schedule. So the direction this evening, you have a, you know, any way you want to do it, the options, I believe, that are outlined in the staff report is to approve the resolution and the exhibit, which is the schedule as is. You can approve the resolution and the schedule and then appoint to a subcommittee, which could be Mayor Taylor, City Councilmember Nash. We can go back and review this as a subcommittee with myself and interim city attorney Cara Silver and actually go line by line and discuss the retention of things. The third option would be to, you know, just continue the item if you wanted to meet without approving the schedule. I also do want to clarify that records retention is, again, brought annually, typically in August or September, but that item would not be brought before the City Council without the approval of a current records retention. So if you approve the schedule this evening and then still wanted to go back and review it as a subcommittee, we wouldn't bring the destruction item before you until the, everyone is comfortable with the schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, for that clarity. And I'll defer again to Councilmember Nash. What is your position on it? So that I know?
My position is I'm comfortable with the current schedule and just reviewing things as they come to council for actual destruction on an annual basis. But I'm also, would be happy to support what you're, any, if you have different interests.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, my concern was just around destroying certain records too soon. I felt that the retention time should be extended, if, if not just a year. And so since we're not destroying records, we're just talking about this schedule, that there's opportunity down the line. But I do appreciate all of you for supporting what my concerns, I appreciate that. So at this time, so I don't, I don't see a need for a subcommittee at this time. I know we just love subcommittees, but at this time, we will not be creating one. So at this time, I guess we can move on, since we're not voting on this, correct, Ms. Heron?
So the recommendation would be to approve the resolution and the attached schedule. And again, this doesn't destroy anything, it just updates our current schedule. So if, it would be the direction of the council to approve, we would need a motion and a second. Now, motion by City Councilmember Carlton. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. So we have a motion by Councilmember Carlton, a second by Vice Mayor Combs, to approve Resolution Number 6554, amending the city's records retention schedule. And by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item on regular business, H3, Direction on Reactivation of Advisory Bodies. To introduce the City Council, to introduce this item, City Clerk Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of the City Council. This report is being delivered to you this evening per direction from the City Council to look into the reactivation of advisory bodies. At this time, I have no further details than what was in the report and no presentation, but I'm here for questions or comments from the City Council.
Does anyone on the council have a question regarding advisory bodies? Councilmember Nash?
I do, but should we take public comment first? Or shall I make my? Okay.
Thank you for the reminder. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. We did not receive any public comment via the web form. So at this time, if any member of the public has a public comment on Item H3, the reactivation of advisory bodies, please engage the hand feature on the top right-hand side of your screen. I will be able to unmute your microphone and you can address the City Council. And so again, giving some extra time here for anyone who has a comment on Item H3, reactivation of advisory bodies, please engage that hand feature and I can open your mic so you can address the City Council. We do have one public comment here from Karen Grove. So Karen, I'm going to unmute your microphone and you can address the City Council as soon as you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I am a member of the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking as myself. I got as far into the staff report as to see that the staff who will support commissions will be redirected from working in the Emergency Operations Center. And I'm wondering what is going to be the impact of that on the community, on the most vulnerable in our community? And is it possible to consider reactivating some commissions who have time-sensitive, urgent business and not others where their business could be without damage to lives and health deferred? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And then again, at this time, if you have a public comment, please engage the hand feature. It does look like we have one more. Josie, I'll be with you in just one moment. Here we go. Josie, if you could unmute yourself, you should have the opportunity to address the City Council. Josie, are you able to engage your microphone? This is Josie Gayard. It does look like you're unmuted, Josie. Okay, so Josie, I'm going to recommend, since we're unable to hear you, if you can use the question feature, also in the same location as your hand icon, and just type in your public comment and I can get that to our City Council. Thank you. One last check. Seeing no further public comment, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any follow-up questions or comments from the council on this item? Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. I know that on the Sister City Committee, Committee, they were interested in getting back together because they had to cancel the trip to Japan. And as an alternative this year to people going to Japan, they wanted to do a, a, like a pen pal, but a, a modern version of a, a pen pal program. And they felt uncomfortable moving forward without getting everyone together and they can't legally get everyone together because of the Brown Act without it being noticed. And so they feel awkward and would like to have the opportunity to get together. I know that the EQC might be another one that were, that are active. I hear from them a lot because I'm on the Pennsylvania Clean Energy Board and possibly that's not the direct staff that is, is being impacted by, by other activities quite as much. And so whether we reactivate mall or reactivate some, I know that, that many of them are chomping at the bit and have real things that they'd like to do and they're being prohibited from doing that because of needing to have unofficial meetings, get together and do, and do that work.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. So are there any input questions? Councilmember Nash?
So as Councilmember Carlton said, the EQC Subcommittee for the Climate Action Plan has been meeting and met with the council subcommittee of Councilmember Mueller and myself. And we are, I would like to request that we actually move up the EQC date in order to review the Climate Action Plan with the entire EQC Committee before bringing it forward to council so that everyone has an opportunity to see that as a commission rather than just having a subcommission bring forward the recommendations. And so I would request that we try to meet in June with the EQC for the specific purpose of Climate Action Plan. At this point, there does not need to be a, it does not need to be meeting, I believe, about other subjects, but the Climate Action Plan is a really important policy matter that needs the entire EQC. So right now, it's scheduled for July 22nd and I would like to see whether there's any, well, I would like to strongly recommend that we move forward in, as early in June as possible. And I will let my fellow subcommittee, Councilmember Mueller.
I have a follow-up question before that. Councilmember Nash, when you said to meet in June, are you talking about the EQC meeting? are you talking about the EQC meeting with the council in June? Or are you talking about the Subcommittee?
Actually, I'm talking about the entire EQC being able to meet with and not with the count not with the council, just with the entire EQC.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Having said that, as the our liaison actually is actively involved in the EOC, but has been finding time to meet with us and has been doing outstanding job of balancing all her different responsibilities. So thank you so much, Ms. Lucky.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I'll support moving up the EQC. I do have a question about this approximate equipment costs in the staff report because it says $1,000 for a laptop. And I was like, that seems pretty expensive. And then it says an ethernet cable, and I don't have an ethernet cable, and I don't think people have that at their house. Most people, some people do, but I don't know. The headset's $140. I mean, I'm using just headphones that are like probably, you know, 12. And then a computer monitor, and I don't know why I need a computer monitor with a laptop. So I just I was a little, I found that portion of the approximate equipment costs puzzling. What I would suggest is for those that we need to Chromebooks for 199 bucks probably covers all of that. And we can probably figure out some cheaper headsets. But I just, the reason why I bring that up is in all and and justing aside is because I think we have to get tighter on that in reports. What's the cost? And what's the real cost when we make a decision like this? Because with the budget, the way it is, under like understanding, talking to the commissioners in advance, saying, okay, this is what the cost will be. Then let's cost it out and the staff report will help give us a complete staff report and understanding because literally right now, decisions we make like this are affecting people's jobs. So we're just going to have to tighten up on portions of staff reports like this. And but so anyway, I make that comment. I'm not trying to give staff a hard time. But I just, I want us to spend some time focusing on that, sharpening that up. Because as we move on throughout the year, it's going to be important. And and the the costs here were seemed a little redundant and excessive.
Ms. Heron, did you have a follow-up to Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, I do. The numbers in the staff report were given to myself through the IT Department. The cost of the laptop is a city-issued laptop, ethernet cable at $20. For those hosting a meeting, you need a much larger bandwidth. I know for me, I'm actually at home this evening hosting this meeting, and I had to use an ethernet cable in order to actually host it. So it may not be a necessity for, say, the commission members because they would be in in your shoes. But for staff who is hosting, dependent on their Wi-Fi speed, an ethernet cable may be necessary. But again, it's definitely not across the board. Same thing with the headset. Again, I mean, I'm using the ones that I think came with my cellphone. So there was just, there was no cost there. So there are, you know, different costs associated for the different items. The last item on there was the computer monitor. And again, if you have a laptop, you may not necessarily need a computer monitor. Again, just from an organizer's perspective, a larger screen is helpful. Sometimes I connect my television, actually, so I can spread my windows out. But again, it's not required. These are just some associated costs. And I do understand Councilman Mueller's point, you know, with with the numbers being as high as they are. And because there are other options out there, like I've said, I mean, I use my laptop. I use my own headphones, things like that. And we wouldn't be supplying all of those to all of the liaisons, all of the staff, all of the commission members. It's just based on the needs of each individual.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I try and make it a habit not to make fun of staff reports. But seriously, does someone need a separate laptop just for calling into an EQC meeting as opposed to a staff member who calls into every other meeting that we have? This is this is COVID-19. Everyone's calling into a meeting every day. Or you're not doing your job. I would I would challenge anyone to say that they're they're not using a laptop right now or a computer that would be appropriate to call into a meeting. And I myself post Zoom. And you've seen how bad my my connection is. I'm having to talk through my telephone. So, you know, and I I've heard that we can have a Sister City meeting easily in June. And I've been told that by the staff member. So I would also put forward, since I have the support of the staff member, that that we move up that that date as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Judy for the candidness in that, in that what just and I know I'm not trying to pick on that. Just the only reason why I raised it tonight was I just in staff in staff reports going forward, like we talked about in the one the item before this about what it would cost to digitize things, knowing knowing, you know, really trying to bear out the cost of who needs it and what that looks like is going to be important because it would affect potentially, you know, if it was all the members of these commissions or half of them who needed it and it was really this much, then council might pause for a second and say, okay, well, maybe we should have them. Maybe there's something else we need to do in order to make that happen. But but anyway, on the getting moving away from that, moving to the subject matter, I am curious in terms of frequency, does everyone think we should have people meeting on the same frequency of once a month? Or is it once every six weeks or leave things the way they are, see how it goes? And have the staff come back to us with this with a suggestion? The hard thing is, the hard thing isn't this is that like every single one of our commissions, people, you can make the argument is necessary and vital, like affecting people's lives, like Parkinson's wreck would say, hey, you need us to meet because people need to be able to be able to go out and walk in the parks. And there's, you know, there's issues of people living in the parks and there's things that are important that we weigh in. I can't, I can't think of a commission that doesn't think of their work as incredibly serious and important to the city as they should. So.
I have a follow-up question for Ms. Heron. So how has the commissioners been kept up to date? Is the staff liaison staying in contact? Have we polled to see what's needed or if people want to be activated?
So my office has not been in contact with each commission commissioner individually. I have been in contact with the liaisons, and it is my assumption that they have been in contact with their committees and commissions.
Are there any of the liaisons here now in the meeting?
I do believe Clay is available. He is our liaison for Sister City. I think Rebecca Lucky might have logged on, maybe not. Dan Jacobson is here. He is the liaison for the Finance and Audits. I can, I can log off if it's like one of them to pop on and answer any questions you may have.
Would those committees usually meet quarterly? Or is Finance and?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say I've spoken to Clay and he's ready to have the meeting in the beginning of June. So that's not a problem. And it does meet quarterly. So it's not an ongoing burden, I don't think.
Okay. Vice Mayor Combs or Councilmember Nash, do you have any thoughts on this?
Um, again, I'm supportive of staff's recommendation. So I would want to, if the idea right now, the target for the EQC is July 22nd, I think I want to hear if we're moving up these target sort of meeting dates. I think I want to hear from staff about like sort of what that entails and how in a little bit more detail, they came to the dates that that are there. And obviously, Sister City is is TBD. Again, I'm supportive of of that being reactivated also. But but yeah, but if we're if we're sort of pushing up the dates, then I think I want to hear from staff that that's feasible.
Councilmember Nash?
So just speaking for the EQC, which is that that's the commission that I've been most actively working with at this point. The EQC has been meeting by Zoom. Rebecca has been, Ms. Lucky has been attending and working these working these meetings. And I don't believe it would take anything other than the agenda going out to get that one started. I think it's actually they are poised and Rebecca has been in all the conversations that we've been having about getting it reactivated. So I don't believe that one would be a problem. The other commission which I'm active in is the Housing Commission. And unfortunately, I'm not up to date as to what's happening there, but I certainly could touch base with people. But that EQC, they would like to meet on a monthly basis to because of the Climate Action Plan and the urgency of the the issues.
So can I just follow up really quickly to Councilmember Nash? You see, has been meeting? They are currently meeting on some regular cadence?
The Subcommittee has been meeting, which is a Subcommittee. Okay, the Subcommittee, thanks. The Subcommittee has met with Ms. Lucky, yes. And they've also brought in the Council Subcommittee of Councilmember Mueller and myself. So we have, we have been meeting on the on the Climate Action Plan strictly for the purpose of bringing the Climate Action Plan forward for to the council. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash, for following up. And I have a question, I'm not, I guess for Starla, just thinking about the commissions. I have my own thoughts, just thinking about what deadlines are coming up. We definitely need to reactivate our Housing Commission, considering we have the housing element coming up. FAQ, Finance and Audit, but just want to find out from our city manager, just thinking about where we are now and how many staff liaisons are available in the situation we're in. Tell us how much, how likely is it that we could reactivate all or just three or just one?
Well, I would recommend if the council, and you've demonstrated a great interest tonight in reactivating the commissions, that we go ahead and reactivate all of them. And if that becomes a workload issue, we'll bring that back to you.
Okay, thank you. And and well, my questions are, are are all, are all of our commissioners ready to be reactivated and to participate fully in their role on the, whether it's the Library Commission, Housing, or the Finance and Audit Committee?
Well, I think we wanted to get direction from the City Council before we reached out to them. But we can certainly survey them and and see their and check their availability.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton?
And and just in difference to the issue about the people working on the the emergency, of course, staff will tell us if anything to do with the committees or commissions is going to impact their work, that would impact health and safety, they would tell us and we will react responsibly.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm looking at the the Table 1 timeline. So other than the EQC, I'm in support of that commission meeting in June. Since collectively, I know we all prioritize the climate action as a council. And is there, are there any other commissions? Councilmember Carlton? With the Sister City, you wanted that to reactivate in June?
I was told by Clay that they're completely happy to have the meeting in early June or at some point in June. He says he's ready. And I know that the people on the committee are.
Councilmember Mueller and Vice Mayor Combs, do you have any thoughts on the Finance and Audit Committee? It's set to reactivate in July, possibly? So if you have any thoughts?
I think it's great.
I see reactivation August 19th. Is that, am I looking at the wrong thing?
No, you're you're correct.
I I am I'm fine with that date. I'm assuming that that the city clerk reached out to the liaison and, you know, that was the date that seemed most appropriate. And so I'm supportive of it.
So in light of our situation with the budget, does it make sense to reactivate the Finance and Audit Committee sooner so that they possibly can make recommendations? Or we can expand the scope of the charge of the Finance and Audit Committee so that the recommendations from FNA can be made to the council?
Well, I, yeah.
Vice Mayor Combs?
No. Can we keep going, Councilmember Mueller? I'll come back after him. All right.
So I actually think late, late mid to late July is probably more appropriate. So we're going to get through this section here in June. And then in hopefully, a little foreshadowing, hopefully in in late June, we can have a little bit of I was going to ask you guys later, in late June, we could potentially bring in some expert opinion, local expert opinion. And then in July, in July, we're still in the first quarter, first quarter portion of the budget. So moving into looking at what the second quarter portion of the budget would be would take place in at the end of August. So if we can meet with them in in mid to late July, that gives us a pretty good idea for them to give us what we're doing in August. So and I won't, I won't, I won't foreshadow anymore on the on the discussion on the budget. But that was, that's sort of my thinking on it.
Oh, I'm fine with that. Again, I would just want to understand if there are some unforeseen, you know, consequences in moving it that we that resulted in it being, that the recommended be in August 19th. But I'm not opposed to, you know, pushing it to earlier if if that's if that's possible. I'm, yeah, I certainly would like the the Finance and Audit Committee to to chime in with regards to our budget challenges. I don't know if I'd be on board necessarily with changing their scope or charter in any significant way. But but certainly would want to have them have them chime in.
Thank you. Ms. Heron?
Just wanted to provide just a little bit of clarification on the timeline that was proposed in the staff report. It's definitely an organic timeline. We can adjust things as needed. The target meeting dates were selected based on these commissions regularly scheduled meetings. And then the timeline for training kind of backtracked from there. So if the direction of the council say is to reactivate EQC, Sister City and FAC sooner, then we will just adjust the timeline to make that happen. So again, the timeline that's proposed was again, based off the target meeting date of their next regularly scheduled meeting, given time to train. You can see the training times is a full week. And that is just, it may not even take a full week to train. I'm sure staff training would take just an hour or so. It's just working around everyone's schedules. So that's why we wanted to do a week of training. But again, the timeline can definitely be flex flexible based on the direction of the City Council. You know, if it's reactivate everyone with an emphasis of getting EQC in June, FAC in late to mid. July and Sister Cities as soon as possible, then the timeline will reflect that.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, in the in the sense of it's already 8:30, I am happy to make a motion that this is approved to reactivate them. And the reactivation date pending on. The professional advice of the liaisons from the Commissions and the staff liaison. I'm sure they can work out something that's amicable.
I still, I have a question if Ms. Kaufman is here. I mean, that's, I'm thinking about the housing element and the timeline for that, if that has changed. Then I won't push for the Housing Commission to meet sooner.
I am bringing Rhonda on right now, if you want to give me just a brief moment.
It was nice to see you briefly, Ms. Chow.
Rhonda, if you're able to engage your webcam.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Oh, perfect, yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm not able to use my webcam, I'm having some technical difficulties, but the the housing element timeline. Has been pushed by a couple of months, but not in any, and it's already underway. There are a lot of activities that we are working on through the 21 Elements Housing Group. So we do, that is still on schedule, we just have a small.
So that's due in June?
Actually, if Ms. Chow is on, if Deanna is on, I think she was attended the latest 21 Elements meeting. She may be a better better update on that timeline.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, hi, good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of the City Council, Deanna Chow, interim Community Development Director. So the housing element is something that is pending or upcoming or its cycle, which would be due on January of 2023. We are completing our fiscal currently right now, so one of the, it's a multi-year process. There hasn't been any changes to the date given COVID-19. And it will be something that the City Council will be involved in terms of June and RFPs, figuring out consultants, so there are many steps to this process. As Rhonda mentioned, 21 Elements has started to put together some scopes, working with the different jurisdictions on what sort of products and what type of data would be necessary. But there really hasn't been much work from the city side beyond understanding that it is going to be a complex. Effort, it's going to be involving various commissions, members of the public, the City Council. And so we want to make sure that we have an engaged and informed process that is something that we need to determine the timeline with the City Council. And we'll bring more information back, if that's something that the City Council would like to continue to pursue in this fiscal year. And moving forward to the completion date and the end of 2022.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
I guess I would like to recommend as liaison to the Housing Commission that we sort of gather the staff liaison, the. Housing Commission Chair and maybe Vice Chair and make a determination what makes the most sense to. Whether we meet as indicated on July 1st or try and push that sooner and also depending on staff. Capacity. So. And then can I make one other comment? And that would be, this is with regard to Councilmember Carlton and with Sister City Committee. I was wondering whether this might be a good time to see whether the. Sister City Committee would be. As effective or more effective in a different capacity without the direct links to the city that we discussed before. Because it is a shame that. You know, in the situation where you cannot go to Japan and you have this other project that really sounds exciting not to be able to do anything until this, you can meet as a commission.
Um, three, sorry, ma'am?
Yes.
Sorry, um, yeah, we, the Sister City Committee has actually discussed that. Most of the Sister City Committees are structured differently than a, than the way we are. And that's something that we want to get together and and discuss further and bring back to Council, that that exact same thing, that that exact such a. But I don't want to take out of turn until we meet.
Councilmember Nash?
I would like to move that we proceed with the. Report as recommended, working with various liaisons and chairs to come up with the best target meeting date. And. That's works for everyone.
Good, Councilmember Nash, fortunately, I had a first by a City Councilmember Carlton that was very, I think it was identical to Councilmember Nash's. Motion as well regarding the reactivation of the bodies and just working with staff liaisons and regarding of timing and just trying to accommodate maybe swifter start time. For the various commissions and committees that we have discussed. So with that, I will take a roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton?
Hi.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Now we will move on to our next regular business item, which is H4. Provide direction on budget balancing measures, including program and service reduction for the City Manager's proposal. Proposed fiscal year budget for 2020, 2021. To introduce this item is our Assistant City Manager, Nick Pegaros. Or Mr. Dan Jacobson.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, do I have my mic on correctly this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, yeah, so as noted, Dan Jacobson, Assistant Administrative Services Director, I will be introducing this one today. Judy, if you could pass me the presentation, please, thank you. So is it visible at this point, I apologize, this is my first time presenting? So we are at the title screen?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, so the topic is the fiscal year 2020, 21 Service and Program Reductions. I would like to just start out by making the comment that several of the items that will be discussed tonight are numbered by reference item. That those are all available in one table that is a handout, it is available from the tile screen for the webinar. So you can download and pay attention to those as well, but I will try to make note of which ones in particular we're talking about as we go. So on the agenda, only a couple items, the first is to receive direction on prior consensus, then moving into additional potential measures. And finally, providing additional direction of those additional potential measures. So just to reiterate, since this is a continued item from before, the requested direction from staff is to provide direction on program and service reductions. To include in the City Manager's proposed budget. The Budget Study Session was originally scheduled for today, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the resultant changes on the budget had to be readjusted. The proposed budget is still scheduled for June 9th and budget adoption on June 23rd. So first in this is confirmation of consensus received at prior meeting, so the the meeting that was continued, there were a number of items that were discussed by the City Council. And we are seeking direction of the, to confirm the direction of that consensus. Next is to consider other budget balancing measures, so there are a number of options which were not discussed, as well as some uses such as revenues and one-time money. And finally, following on this, if the Council does confirm direction of position of removal of occupied positions, we do need authorization to issue layoff notices to those employees. So by way of recap and as a method to show this somewhat graphically, we'll try to go through what was previously discussed. So the tables mentioned here are the ones in the handout, they're available, they're labeled with the previous staff report table numbers. So Table 2 items were baseline budget adjustments, these were a large number of things, including consolidation of things like overtime and temporary staff time. Changes to the CalPERS rates with the changes in assumption and other baseline assumptions. Consolidated together, they totaled 800,000 or 0.8 million. Table 3 plus number 92 is the unrepresented management. Table 3 were all changes to unrepresented management and 92 was the Assistant Public Works Director and Transportation, that one was called out separately and added in to Table 11 afterward. Those changes total 1.1 million. And Table 4 with the exclusion of number 41, number 41 is the Police Data Initiative. So this was discussed slightly earlier during the meeting, that was that item. So that was not included in the table for, in Table 4's total, bringing the total of Table 4 with that one exception to 3.7 million. Collectively, these, on the right there is the table showing what effect that will have on staff, so Table 2 includes one layoff. No frozen, full-time equivalent positions and no temps. Table 3 plus 92 is zero layoffs, but three frozen positions and zero temporary employees. And Table 4, with the exception of number 41, includes three layoffs, five frozen or eliminated position and 14 temps who would need to be laid off. The total for these is four layoffs, eight frozen or eliminated position and 14 temporary staff. So moving back through the pie chart there. By way of a benchmark, the one-time money or revenue box of $4 million was staff's recommended number for use of one-time money or revenue. So it's shown there graphically, the difference between what was previously discussed and believed to be consensus of the City Council is the $3.1 million delta there. So adding in just one section there, there were a number of other individual items that were not full tables that City Council discussed, those were all from Table 11 in the previous staff report. Those items are indicated there, they include a number of things, including library hours, a position in community services and the removal of the traffic unit. So collectively, those Table 11 item, the numbers 52, 55, 56, 58 and 76. Result in six frozen positions and the layoff of 27 temporary staff, bringing the totals to four layoffs, 14 frozen or eliminated positions and 41 temporary staff laid off. As you can see, the gray area there is the remaining delta between those items that City Council discussed and staff believed to be consensus agreement. And the one-time money and revenue recommendation from staff of $4 million. So at this time, I would like to sort of break this presentation into two pieces, just so that we can get very clear direction here. The first requested action is to direct the City Manager to incorporate these reductions that were previously identified and each of the reference numbers is outlined there. For those who are looking at the handout, they can be identified by all of the line numbers there. So to incorporate all of these reductions into the proposed 2020, 21 budget. This does result in the freezing or elimination of 13 full-time equivalent positions. And does require layoff notices to be issued to four regular and 41 temporary employees. And Madam Mayor, with that, I would like to pass it back to you for any questions that I can answer at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson, are there any follow-up questions from the Council? Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I have no idea how you came up with that and giving me a list of of numbers right there at this point. I would probably need 30 minutes to sit down and correlate this number to that thing. When I had a meeting, I had a phone call with Nick Pegaros. Earlier today, and it seemed that he thought that everything we hadn't discussed on the the list that we went through previously. Was going to be kept and that was, I spoke with, yeah, I am, was told that by another City Council member that that was not necessarily the case. So when you give me this list of things and say that adds up to, I wrote down on my little Excel spreadsheet really quickly, does that add up to $15 million?
These ones that identified add up to a total of 7.2 million.
Oh, that 7.2, that they would add up to, that makes a little bit more sense. But I, off the top of my head, I have to stop and look and see what those numbers link to, to see that 7.1. Because from what I saw and what I went through with Nick this afternoon, we had identified 7.3. And yet, everything off Table 11 that staff thought we were saving were just things that we hadn't discussed yet. So I think we need to go back to Table 11 or the table, I called it Table 15 that you've you've sent us this this morning. And look at it again and say, okay, we're cutting everything except these things that we're saving. Because I think staff got it the other way around, just because we haven't discussed it doesn't mean that we we wanted to remove it from the cut list. Is what I'm saying making sense?
So I believe so, so if I understand correctly, there are a number of items that were not indicated with a checkmark column in the handout that was sent out. That Council still desired to discuss to potentially cut.
We we had to end the meeting early, we had not even nearly finished discussing that. In fact, I would actually put that unless we say we're cutting everything except for these items and go through them, which I think we can do, frankly. If we don't do that, if we actually go through item by item again, we need to set up an all-day meeting to go through item by item. So otherwise, I think we go back to Table 11 and we say, these are the things that we would like to to remove from the cut list, everything else we cut, which. That's, that's how I would suggest putting forward, but but just because we didn't discuss it does not mean that it's safe. And anyway, that's just my understanding from. From speaking to people from staff and and Council members. And and if you guys want to go back and do that tonight, that's cool, if not, we can set up another meeting, I I'm completely open, but I just wanted to put that out there. That I think there was a huge disconnect between Council intention and the the staff assumption of where we were going with this. And and no fault, no fault at all, it was just miscommunication. I don't, I don't mean to be throwing out criticism.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so complete disclosure, I have not talked to Councilmember Carlton so about this, so I'm not one of the people she's spoken to about this. And that also was my understanding that that the meeting ended because it was late and and there was this, I think, a decision made that we were not being effective. As it got into the late hour, not a decision that, well, since we didn't get to it, then it was, there was a reprieve and it was was to be included. For for the next fiscal year, and so that's my conclusion too, and so and I don't know where we left off specifically, whether it was like in the 50s or something, and I know we jumped around. But my understanding of next steps was that at some point we would go back and picked up where we left off and and start moving through, through, through the items that had been identified. So that was my understanding, if I didn't, I also apologize if I wasn't clear at any point about about that, that understanding.
Yes, Mr. Pegaros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Nick Pegaros, Assistant City Manager, I think we're all seeing the same thing. What Mr. Jacobson is highlighting is that we would like, the budget needs to be done for all intended purposes this week. And we need to, we were hoping that the Council has reached consensus on table. hoping that the council has reached consensus on tables, on the items that were on table two, table three and table four, four weeks ago or three weeks ago, I can't remember the, the date, and it was continued and it was continued again. And so we would just like to, if the council, if the council is so willing, we would very much like to put closure to those items so that we can go on to the, the other items that need to be addressed. And by no means were we inferring that anything was safe. The only thing that, that, that council expressed a desire to keep safe were the childcare programs. And Mr. Jacobson's going to go through quickly as, as we move on to the next round of discussions that we need to, we owe the council additional information on childcare and we plan to bring that back in June. But just to be clear, we were not inferring that the council had said that if it was on the list, or if you didn't talk about that it was okay, and it should stay on the list, or it was whatever the case may be. So that's where we are. I would hope that just by way of process, it may be helpful to consider whether or not tables two, three and four, with the one exception to table four, are acceptable. That'll at least give us the foundation to start working on the budget and then we can work through whatever else the council is able to get through this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pogero. And Councilmember Carlton, you have a question or a comment, but something I want to put out there because I've gotten a text from one of our council members that needs a five-minute break. So-
Sure. If you are looking for a motion, I will move that we approve 2A, 3 and 4. I also wanted to let you know that I take meticulous notes in my Excel spreadsheet that I've shared with, with people. And I can tell you, and we can go through pretty quickly up into number 30. And at 30, we started skipping around a little bit on my, on my list, or sorry, 19. After that, we skipped around a little bit. But I'm, I'm happy to share that, or we can go through real quick and, and say what we wanted to pull out. But for the sake of, of time before we take a five-minute break, I, I'm happy to, to move that we accept 2A, 3 and 4. And as I remember, that included a 144,000, if memory serves me correct, pullout that Mayor Taylor wanted for the open police documents. Everything else was as recommended by staff. So that's the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Carlton, Councilmember Nash, and then after you, Councilmember Mueller.
Thank you. First of all, hi, Daly. So what I wanted to, I have questions on table two, three and four after getting these excellent reports that we got this afternoon. And I did go through these and I have some, two items that I want to question a little bit and just some other questions about percentages. So I'm happy to start with that after we hear Councilmember Mueller. I don't think this is going to take that long, but I do, I am not ready to approve the, the tables quite yet.
Councilmember Mueller?
I just wanted to note for record that I very much appreciated Councilmember Carlton sending her spreadsheet to me. I didn't open it yet until we got into the meeting, just to be, make sure that everything was open and transparent. So I haven't done that yet, but I appreciated that you sent it to me. I, and I'll read the rest of my comments about the budget later on as we start to work through. So, but everyone's come ready for business. So, yeah.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. For the sake of transparency, I'm, I'm an Excel geek and I took table 2A, 3 and 4 and all the tables and put them in Excel spreadsheet so that people could easily delete and move over as we, as we spoke and keep like a running tab more easily. So that's what I shared with staff and with the city council. There were no opinions. It was just moving everything over so that we could, we could more easily keep track of where we were numerically.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. I appreciate the spreadsheet that you sent me. Thank you. And we will take a five-minute break. Or did you, is five minutes enough time or did you need a little more time? And Judy has come on.
Oh, and the break is fine. Just a reminder, when you come back to just either mute your mics or wait until we have a quorum before opening up discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor, may continue the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And welcome back. And I believe we were still in the middle of a discussion with Mr. Jacobson.
Yes, Mayor Taylor, welcome back. Are there any other questions I can answer? Or I can, one thing that might be helpful is to provide the full list to council visually. I do have the handout available that I can show on the screen. And that might be helpful to go through so that we could double check which items staff believed to be consensus items and just verify that those were in fact consensus items.
Is this list different than what we have in our, in our agenda?
It was the handout that's available on the GoToWebinar and was sent to council earlier today. But no, it is not different. That, that list has a column called Check. The items that staff believe to be consensus items have a green V to simulate the check mark.
Councilmember Nash?
So depending how we want to proceed, I am happy to just jump to the, a couple items that I have questions about that are part of the baseline. So I'll wait to hear how you would like to proceed. That would be one way.
I'm comfortable with jumping to the items that you want to discuss. Does anybody else have any input on that?
So my only question is, so we're, we're, we're working off of that, that worksheet, right? That's attached to the, the webinar and that was sent earlier and not the prior sort of staff report. And so we're not going to be referring to table two, three and four, table 11. We're, we're just going to be sticking to this. Or are we going to be sticking to that table? That's, that's my only clarification request.
So that list has all of the table references. So it has the tables as they were numbered in the May 12 staff report, as well as what they were numbered in the May 26 staff or the May 19 staff report. The reference numbers all remain the same. So we can refer to them by reference number or by table numbers, just as long as there's clarification on which ones. Give me just a second and I can show that list.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson.
So at this point, do you see a list of table 15, all potential budget balancing measures? And I've zoomed in so that it's a readable size.
Yes. Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I just have a question on how we're going through this. It seemed easier to vote on table 234, get that out of the way and then deal with the rest of the things. I realize table 234 is basically everything up to number 49, as I understand the way the tables work. Is that correct? Yeah. Everything up to 40 is, is table 234?
Correct. The one that I would note as being the potential exception is the police data transparency, which was number 41. That one staff did not believe there to be consensus to include.
Right. Well, there was, there was consensus to not include that. So there was consensus. But we were so, um, shall we deal with one to 49 and then carry on after that?
Councilmember Nash, I see you with your hand up and nodding yes. So you're in agreement with Councilmember Carlton? I didn't hear what you just said.
I agree with looking at tables 234 and basically one through 49 and would love to just jump in unless someone else wants to go first. So my first question is about number 19 and 40, which seem to be linked. And I have two questions. One is, well, basically until I saw these charts, which these are great. Thank you so much, Dan. I was unclear that number 19, which is included as a baseline, is migrate library catalog, patron records, management platform from PLS to MP owned platform. First comment is that seems like a very different beast than anything else in table two. And it belongs to me much more in table four, along with number, what was I just saying, 40? And which is also the PLS system. So that do with whatever you want with that, wherever you put it in the table. But having said that, when I look at number 40 with number 19, a couple comments. First of all, the withdrawing the number 40, withdraw from Peninsula Library System, note one time cost in table two, which is number 19. Both essentially withdrawing from the library system is going to have an impact on residents and their ability to use the library. And in addition, we do not gain that much money from it. I mean, every, every bit is worth it. But to me, it seems like, just jumping to my bottom line, I think we should revisit this in a few months after we're through this crisis. But I don't think right now, while we're, people are homebound and so dependent on the library is the time to disrupt the services, especially when there is a smaller benefit. It's $270,000 is the savings for number 40. However, that's 130,000 of that goes away because we need to, one time platform migration project would take some focused time, including IT support and upfront cost. Community would experience some inconvenience. And basically, I question why we would do that right now. I've had a number of residents who reached out to me and are very concerned that they use the PLS system and that they will not have the same access to books that are not in our library. And in fact, now looking at the impacts and assumptions of number 40, it in fact says Menlo Park residents would find it less convenient to request books from over other library jurisdictions. So while I think it's something that's good to consider, I question why we do it now. Thank you.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you, Sean Reinhardt, the library director. Thank you for your comments, council member. So live Menlo Park residents would still have access to virtually any library book or audio visual item that they desire. They simply would need to undertake like an additional step, which is to request the item. If, if Menlo Park doesn't already own it, they could either, they could just request the item through our Link Plus, which is separate from PLS, which has access to about 80 public and academic libraries throughout the states of California, Oregon and Washington. So virtually any item can be brought in within a couple of days. So while there would be, it would be a little less convenient, the service would still be there and just rather, this might be a day or two slower. The savings that you noted there are actually ongoing. That's an ongoing annual subscription cost that would then be permanently reduced by a pretty substantial figure. The $130,000 would be associated with some one time costs of just migrating to our own platform, just off of the shared platform. So there's some additional costs in that first year. But I anticipate that in future years, the operating cost would, would decrease even further, probably to around $80,000 per year. So year over year, that's, that's approaching $200,000 in savings every single year. So it's, it's for those reasons that, you know, this, this particular reduction was put forward, you know, just in the circumstances which are, you know, quite extreme.
I have a follow up question, Mr. Reinhardt. And were we looking at potentially not continuing our annual service with PLS prior to COVID? Or is this, was this kind of an obvious place to start?
Well, the service is expensive. And we do have many different means of providing Menlo Park residents pretty much any library book that, or audio visual item that they want, as I mentioned. And so, you know, membership in PLS is not necessary to provide that service to our residents. Also, I note that all, all the other libraries throughout the county and the Bay Area and the state, with a couple of exceptions, do issue library cards for free to any California resident. So any resident who really wanted to, you know, patronize some of those other libraries could simply get a library card from them at no cost. And certainly Menlo residents who live outside of Menlo Park, who are California residents, could still get a library card here in Menlo Park. They would just be asked to return the items back to us as opposed to dropping them off at some other location.
And can you just explain to me why this is a tier one? I know this has been a couple weeks since the presentation of how we ended up with this tiering system.
The savings are not insignificant. There's a pretty substantial savings there in the six figures. It's an, it's an ongoing cost savings over time, year over year. And the impact to the community is relatively minor. It's nowhere near the scale of reducing library hours and laying off employees. It's a manageable change that we think ultimately will have pretty small impact on, on residents. There'd be a period of adjustment as we migrated and people got accustomed to the new system. But overall, I think it would be relatively minor impact. So it's certainly something that we've been aware of, the, the cost compared to the value of the services that we receive. But the current circumstances sort of really forced the question to come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I just have some questions. I just want to functionally really understand what we're doing here. So many years ago, when my kids were toddlers, we would go to the Palo Alto Kids Library and pick out books there and take them home. And when it was time to read them, rather than having to drive all the way up to Palo Alto, we would maybe ride our bikes up to Burgess Park and be playing. And it was really easy to drop them off at Burgess Park and we knew they would find their way home. Play forward to the next person that had toddlers. Will that person have to then get a separate library card for Palo Alto to use that library? And would they have to drive back each time to that library? Or would they still be able to, to drop them off at our library? How, just functionally, how are things changing?
So regarding Palo Alto, Palo Alto was not, not part of PLS. So then as now, there would need to be a separate library card, although Palo Alto, that's a great library, not quite as good as Menlo Park, of course, but it's a good library. And, you know, definitely worth getting a card there. Functionally, what's, what would happen should the council move forward with this particular reduction is rather than Menlo Park sharing a library database with all of the other library jurisdictions in the county, which actually does have quite a few technical issues associated with it, we would simply migrate to a platform that Menlo Park just wholly owns and controls, which is consistent with the vast majority of other public libraries around the state. So it's not like we'd be, you know, inventing something new. And so what that would mean is, yeah, patrons would need to have, Menlo Park residents, they would just automatically have the Menlo Park card. Folks who live outside of Menlo Park would need to actually come to the Menlo Park Library to get a Menlo Park card. Folks who live in Menlo Park and want to get a card, say at Atherton, which is operated by the county, they would have to go to Atherton and get the card. Books that are checked out from Menlo Park, we would require that people actually return them to Menlo Park. If they forget and return them to another library, there's a lot of different ways that libraries kind of work together to make sure the books, you know, kind of get back home. But it's not the default that they can just be returned anywhere. We would, you know, strongly encourage people to, if they take them to the wrong library, it would be nice if they'd go get them and bring them back to us. But if they can't, we work it out with the other library to get them back. So those would be the main functional differences, basically.
So it would be, it would be, okay. So between Atherton, then I used the wrong example. Between the Atherton Library, it would still, I would then need to get a, an Atherton library card?
Yes, to borrow their items. If you wanted an item that was at the Atherton Library. However, I will just repeat that if a Menlo Park resident wants a specific item and we don't have it, we would get it for them. So there wouldn't be a need to go to the Atherton Library.
Impact for $200,000, people would have to wait another day or two to get the book they wanted?
Yeah, in a nutshell, more or less, yes. That's, that's the main inconvenience factor.
Impacting people's ability to get books.
There would be some impact in that regard. It might slow it down a little bit.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah. So what other cities in San Mateo County who have their own library systems? Like Atherton is a county library, correct? And so which cities have their own library systems and are not a part of the Peninsula Library System?
None in San Mateo County. Every other library in the nine county Bay Area has their own system.
No, I'm saying so like the Peninsula, the, the Peninsula Library System is specifically for San Mateo County, correct?
It's a consortium of the various jurisdictions. Yes. So some of the city, you're asking which cities operate their own library as opposed to a county branch?
No, which cities that operate their own library, right? And then are not in this, this, this Peninsula Library System, right? And who don't, who, who are completely separate and who essentially have what you are proposing here with, for the city.
None, none within San Mateo County.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not within this county. However, that it's the norm in every other part of the state and the Bay Area.
For the Peninsula Library System, though, the only library systems that can join it are San Mateo County and, and other city run within San Mateo County, correct? They don't allow like
I don't know if there's a prohibition on it. I just think there's no desire or need for any other libraries to join it.
Okay. Um, okay. So, so essentially like if Menlo Park goes this direction, it would be the only city in San Mateo County that has its own library system, its own library branches, and is not a part of this Peninsula Library System, correct? Cause like Redwood City is
Yeah, just to clarify though, clarify, Menlo Park does have its own library system and that's, that's the library system we have. And we do have our own libraries and that's the main library in the Bell Haven branch. What we are currently sharing is an online catalog for looking up books and a few other technical things and the delivery of the books back and forth.
Yeah, right. The ability to access it. Like again, like Burlingame runs its own library system, right? Has two branches and it is part of this. The Daily City runs its own, has several branches as part of it. Redwood City runs San Bruno and San Mateo. And then I know a lot of cities don't run their own library. It's, it's a county system. And so I just wanted to have some clarity on the extent to which there isn't any sort of other library system run by city in San Mateo County that's doing this. And so
Not by a city, but by the, the community college district did withdraw or partially withdraw last year to migrate to their own catalog platform.
Okay, okay.
They're previously members and they, they kind of went their own way in that regard last year.
I'm just saying, so there's no, there's no example we can point to in the county that is like, oh, like they did it. Like we could, we can't say like, oh, you know, Redwood City did it and it was fairly successful and you didn't have Redwood City residents complaining that they were no longer a part of the Peninsula Library System. Now, we could still like access it as, because Menlo Park residents are county residents and I'm assuming they can still get like a county card. But, but in this case, Menlo Park would certainly be an outlier, right? And, and it seems like it would be a scenario where it would be different than others. And I do think that that, that's worth noting. I'm not saying that like, again, the savings aren't significant and they override Menlo Park being an outlier in this scenario, but I do think it's worth, worth noting.
Yes. That, that is true within San Mateo County, although, for example, Palo Alto was raised and it would not be different than say like how Palo Alto is operated. The other savings is not as direct and so not really quantifiable in the spreadsheet. But in a typical year, last year, 14,000 items more were loaned out of Menlo Park than were borrowed. So in fact, if we were to withdraw, Menlo Park residents would actually on the net have access to 14,000 more books than they do as members of PLS.
I mean, the only thing is part of the idea of PLS is right, it's, it's a sort of cooperative. This idea that lots of different pieces, like smaller cities in San Mateo County and the library system and the city college system, as a whole, I as a resident benefit from that, right? And so if, if we start a trend of everyone pulling out, right? Menlo Park pulls out, we're saving money and then Daily City pulls out and it saves money and Burlingame pulls out, then the value of that collective, then, you know, as every individual member starts saying that like, hey, it's, it's better for me to be out this than in it, it, it sort of, again, ultimately negates the benefit, right, of, of having everyone in it. And so I, I, I'm not, again, like, this is a very difficult and challenging time we're all in. And I think that there are hard decisions that have to be made. But I do think we have to be clear about those hard decisions. With that, I'm, I'm going to sort of shut up now. And I see Councilmember Mueller wants, wants to chat in. And I don't, I don't think I have anything else.
No, that's all, all great conversation. And, you know, I love talking about library services in this level of detail. So if you just indulge me, that the, the benefit that you refer to is, it's not unique to, to PLS. That same benefit can and already is available to Menlo Park residents through other systems like Link Plus.
But I would just say, do we have an obligation to the county? But I would just say, do we have an obligation to the county system, right? To our member, our, our membership in the county to, to, to help safeguard this and reinforce it? And, and I think that that, that, that's part of the debate. But I appreciate, appreciate your, all your answers.
Seems to be some technical issues this evening.
Yes. And I believe Councilmember Mueller had a question, but I do not see him on the screen.
I'm here. And you see me now, sorry, I don't know how that happened. Thank you. Sean, it sounds like you're not sure, just, I don't want to spend too much time on PLS, but it sounds like the $270,000 you think is cost-effective. Is that, is that right?
Yes, that's accurate, Councilmember.
And do you, why does it cost $270,000 to share library catalogs? The cost seems pretty high to me.
Well, there are a lot of additional services kind of packed in there. Certainly some resources that we purchase through PLS, like some of the electronic resources we would want to continue to acquire. I think our game plan would be to turn to the Friends of the Library for those costs, at least for the coming year. That's sort of part of their mission, is to provide library materials and augment the collection. Over the years, PLS's costs have just increased. I think over the past four years, 17% has been the scale of the increase. It's just become more and more costly, as I, I think, as overhead and other costs have increased. And it, it's gotten to the point where, you know, the value proposition maybe isn't the same as it was in the 80s when it was formed. There are a lot of benefits to it, don't get me wrong. But when it comes to a pretty substantial budget reduction scenario, including the layoff of 31 library employees, we kind of have to look at everything. And this is one of the things that seems less impactful than the, certainly than the library hours reductions.
And I'm curious, what is, so I have sort of different questions, not so much, I mean, I do have some line item questions, but I'm, what I'm trying to take a step back and understand is, like, what's your vision for the library right now in this pandemic? And then, and then how does your strategy budgeting align with that?
I love that question, and I only wish it had been asked under different circumstances.
Yeah, well, with the pandemic-
Where, where, where we're going, I think, and this is true of all public libraries, is away from a repository model where you have a ton of books on the shelf at all times for people to pick from, and toward a fulfillment model, where people kind of search online and kind of know what they want, or maybe they ask us for a little help to find some things that they want, and then we get it for them on demand. That enables us to be a lot leaner and more nimble and more focused on how we expand our resources. And it, it frees up our facilities and our staff to do, to do more in the areas of lifelong learning and technology adoption and innovation that I think people are sort of leaning into in the 21st century, certainly in the 2020s now that we're in. Doesn't mean books go away, doesn't mean they're not important. Just the way that we give people access to them is evolving to be like a fulfillment model. I think that's where we're going. I think it's more efficient or cost-effective. And ultimately, I think library users will have a, a better experience. It's more in aligned with the experience they get now when they go to, sorry to say it, but, you know, Amazon and some of the other fulfillment services out there.
And is the, do you see the pandemic as sort of the opportunity of a forcing mechanism to sort of provide some of that nimbleness? Is there other opportunities, are there opportunities?
I think that certainly exists i- in, in any field and any sector. You know, this kind of difficult circumstance really forces these hard questions and forces innovation and forces creativity. And I think we've just been talking about, like, one micro example of that with, you know, just looking at, do, do we need to be in PLS? Is, can we save this money and maybe still do things well, or maybe, maybe better? It forces the question because when things kind of hum along for so long without change, as is the case here in this example, 30-plus years, you know, it maybe doesn't get that examination until you're sort of forced to really look at it.
So in that lens of what your vision is, and then looking at the line item cuts that you've included here, which ones sort of match that strategy besides PLS? And which ones don't, don't match that strategy? Would you say, you know, boy, it's on the list, but it's, this is gonna tear apart what we're trying to accomplish in our library system?
Well, I think I can only answer that question in reverse, which is, I do think that library hours reductions is, is really hampers that transition because so much of what we do does flow from just access to the facility. Pretty substantial facility. And then looking ahead to the Bell Haven Community Center and Library, that's also gonna be a signature facility in the community. And so anything that reduces access to the facilities for the community, I, I think usually is a step back. But sometimes just the circumstances force that. Reducing the library book budget also would be sort of regressive, except for the fact that we do have a very robust nonprofit volunteer partner organization in the Friends of the Library that are gonna be able to help us backfill that. I think there's a lot that's kind of packed in the PLS proposal because if Menlo Park goes that route, then we will have much greater nimbleness in how we use our electronic resources, how we deploy them, how we kind of frame and improve the user experience. It's something that we can do much more nimbly, quickly and effectively if it's just contained within our own organization as directed by the council, as opposed to being tangled up with a pretty complicated web of, of differing and competing demands throughout the county. So I, I, I hope that sort of partially answers your question.
It does, and I'm curious, what is, what do you expect the backfill to be of the reduced book resource budget if that were put into effect, the 75%? What would you expect you'd see the backfill on that be?
Well, the Friends of the Library, in, in a given year, they, right now, their book sales aren't operating, so they're, they've also taken a hit. They can raise between $100,000 and $120,000 per year with those book sales. And in the past several years, they have not been asked to expand that full amount. So they do have some reserve on hand for times like this. And their mission really is library programs and library books and resources. And so this falls squarely in the books and resources area of their mission. Now, I have not formally made a request of them. However, we're just so fortunate that they're there, and we have such a great working relationship with them. And in sort of casual discussions leading up to this budget conversation, there's confidence there that, that they would step up and assist.
So would you think a reduction by 50% or, or 45% would impact sort of your vision for the library through the pandemic?
A, a reduction of 40, of that percentage in what exactly?
So it says reduce book e-resource budget by 75%.
That budget.
Yeah, that budget. And so if we didn't do a full 75%, but we did do a reduction, there are other costs that can be saved that you expect to see backfill on. And it's not forever, it's just through the pandemic, without impacting what your, what your vision is for delivery of services, of service in the library system through the pandemic. And that's really what, what really comes down to me is, we hire you to run the library system and city manager.
And I'm grateful for that.
Yeah, well, we didn't hire you, city manager did, and you're doing a great job. And but, but what's really important for us in understanding and making these budget cuts is what is the strategy that you guys have in line? What's the effect on services? And you're the best person to tell us that. And so if we're gonna pick something, like which, you know, it's good to hear from you, hey, that one, that one's really gonna affect what, what I think my service delivery is.
I see. So I think, I think I'm kind of hearing maybe asking me to prioritize the PLS cut or the book cut.
No, actually, in my, in my mind, the PLS cut's done. Like, I, I know my colleagues aren't there yet, but from hearing from you that you think it's bloated and that it's not really within your vision of the, of the library system going forward, and that there's other services that are equally accessible, there are all sorts of bureaucracies that have lasted 30 years that are bloated. And if you get the opportunity to take a look at cutting them, even if for a short time that you bring them back, if it was a mistake, $270,000 is a lot of money for, for, for a book shared with that, in, in a county library system. So I'm trying to match those cuts to what your vision is for the department.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, any lessening of the reduction in the book budget would obviously free up the support that we receive from the Friends to be directed to other purposes, for example. Certainly, if, if a cut even of the 75% magnitude was only for, like, you know, one or two years, I think we could just weather it by just being really focused with a fulfillment model as opposed to the repository model of buying books. So I think what we would look at is, rather than focusing it, that delta on additional books, that we would focus it more on technology and probably facility improvements. Sorry, my, I think a truck was driving by, my dog's barking in the background, sorry about that.
That's all right. All right. Well, that's what I needed to know. So a two-year, you could, you could weather a two-year cut of some sort in that area, plus the PLS?
Yes, it, it wouldn't be easy, but it would not be an existential threat to the future strategy of the library. To be honest, the hours reduction is, is the most substantial and impactful reduction by far. Far outstrips those other two.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Nash, are we still on the same item? Councilmember Nash?
I'm just completely really-
It's okay, I'm just clarifying.
When, when is the annual licensing or whatever up for the PLS? It sounded like it was on an annual basis.
Yeah, it's typically renewed July 1st.
July 1st?
Yeah, it's on the fiscal year.
What does it mean to the person who's homebound? What does it mean to the, to the, at all different levels? Like, someone trying to work on a school project, whatever? How, what does it mean to them? We now have closed, cut off the PLS. How do they continue? Is there going to be a visible change to them during the pandemic? Obviously not knowing how long it's gonna last, but?
No, there really should be no change to, like, so, a homebound individual, for example. They, they would have the same level of service as they do in PLS. It's just be Menlo Park providing it. I, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question.
Do they, do they have to get a new library card? Do they have to get used to a different system? What is the immediate impacts? My concern being, right now, stability is really beneficial. Change is, you know, on one hand, one could say that people have time to change right now. On the other hand, I think that there's so much going on around people like this stability. So my question really-
Yeah. Yeah, it's so valuable. So Menlo Park residents, it would be pretty seamless. They wouldn't have to get a new library card, they wouldn't have to do anything. It would just flip to, it would be probably the same platform. It would just be only Menlo Park as opposed to the larger, more complex county one. So, so a Menlo Park resident would, would experience no change as far as, they wouldn't need to get a new library card or anything like that.
How about the selection of books that they have?
Well, it would, it would, it would probably increase by 14,000 books on the net. Well, because Menlo Park loans out to other communities 14,000 more books than we actually borrow. So in the net, our residents would have access to 14,000 more books. See, we, we loan more than we get back.
Right.
More than we receive.
And so we will no longer be loaning to other people, but we're going to be allowed to use their systems?
No, what I'm saying is, 14, more, by being part of the system, we are obligated to loan our books that we buy out. And, and, you know, we get some in return, but the net is that 14,000 more of our books go out than we get back. So it's, it's on, on that one metric, it's a losing proposition for Menlo Park to the 214,000.
A different way. If I'm a student and I'm trying to study something, and you don't have a book here that normally I would just have access to fairly seamlessly, what happens without the system?
Question, I love those questions. I love talking about the library so much, and I really appreciate the time. We would simply get the item for the student. We could probably get it for them within two to four days, even if it's a textbook.
What would it be now?
We could do that right now, except the library's closed.
But how long, what is the difference in, I'm, I'm really trying to impact, what is the quality of life difference for a resident? And that's what I'm not quite sure of yet.
It, it would vary depending on the item. So if it's very esoteric, and we have to get it from a university in Nevada, it might take closer to four or five days to come in. If it is an item that is available at, say, San Francisco State, we could probably get it in one or two days. And, and that's actually comparable to getting a book from, say, San Mateo Public Library. Typically takes a couple of days anyway. But I think I want to be on the conservative side and say, in some cases, we may have to actually just buy the item. And so that would add a few more days because we'd actually have to buy the item, bring it in, and then give it to the person.
All right, but that sounds like it's not different than what it is now.
From the user perspective, it's, it's pretty similar. It might be slightly less convenient because it wouldn't just be all in the one catalog. They'd have to click a couple of extra things in some cases.
Let me, thank you. This sounds like it's going to take quite a bit of IT support. Is that there? How much, you know, what are we missing?
We're fortunate that the, we do have the capacity between the library staff and the IT department. And the, the vendor of the platform, we provides quite a substantial amount of support. It's just part of their service contract, which is another reason why the, the value proposition is kind of worth a closer look.
And on the eBooks, would they be, again, what's the change with eBooks?
No change, we, we would still continue to, we might even save some money there because there are some platforms that we're sort of obligated to go along with the rest of the other libraries in order to bulk purchase them. But some of them might not be what we'd want for Menlo Park residents. So, but I think on the, on the, on the balance, it would be pretty much the same.
And any unknown budget implications, and then I'll let Ray go. Any unknown budget implications, anything we haven't asked that we should know about making this decision?
Yeah, I think the most substantial one would be that we probably couldn't complete the migration on July 1st. It would take a little bit more time, it'd probably take us at least a quarter. And so there would still be like a quarter's worth of expenses, probably, depending how fast we could get it.
Okay, but as far as new subscriptions, things like that to make up for it, not?
No, I think, I think our goal would be to probably renegotiate and save some money on those.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I think, and I appreciate the questions because they're, they're, they're comprehensive. I'm, I'm gonna support Sean here on the, on pulling out of the PLS. Once I heard that there's 15,000 more going out than coming in. I mean, candidly, I'm really appreciative to you, Sean, for your vision here, sharing your vision and strategy and being, open to being nimble with the cost savings here in the department that matches that, because it's a significant cost savings to what we're kind to accomplish budget-wise. So, and certainly, we don't, certainly, we don't want it to last forever if the colleagues and I decide to, to also look at the, the book budget. But the, and whether or not 75% is appropriate or not, but, but the, but the ability to match the current pandemic to a strategy that makes the, that moves the library forward in, in that vision, I think, is the opportunities that we should be looking for. So I think that's great.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I don't know if that was a motion or not, but I, I think we've discussed it this ad nauseam. I just wanted to make a, one final thing that someone had asked me about, online periodicals. I assume this will have a neutral or- I assume this will have a neutral or, it sounds like if, if it's actually benefiting us with eBooks, it might benefit us as well, but, but somebody did ask me, so in, in difference to that individual, I wanted it on record about how it would impact that. And then if, if Councilmember Mueller made a motion, as I understood it, I'm happy to second it. But I did want to make that one question since it was given to me by someone.
So just quickly, when it comes to eBooks, one of the big challenges there is that.
Oh, no, sorry. Online, online periodicals, not eBooks. You already answered that question.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we would, we would strive to just provide the same level of access that is currently there. Although we'd reevaluate and see if Menlo Park residents are even looking at some of these periodicals. In some cases, we are subscribed along with the group and maybe people aren't really using them, at least not in Menlo Park. So we might cut those loose and buy some that Menlo Park residents want.
Okay. Ray, Ray, was that a motion or shall I make one?
No, I, I actually have some input. I've been having some technical difficulties here. So, so I'm just, just when we're talking about cuts, what is our framework? And one thing I, I think we have not done as a council is define essential services. But based on the lengthy conversation around library and around childcare, that would be my assumption that these are the things that are important to the council, especially in light of not being able to resume regular duties for a student, whether they're in high school, grade school, or college. So important to have our, all of our libraries in the city accessible. So, on that thought, Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of clarify. I don't know that we need a motion on this, right? And, and, and staff was already under the impression that we were aligned with this. And so again, I, I just want to point out that, and I indict myself with this, that we spent 40 minutes on that, right? And so, and that was just item one. And, and so I, I think we really need to be more rigorous with ourselves about like how we're going to approach this. Look, I'm, I can be here all night and that's totally fine, or into, well into the morning. But then we either need to sit here and commit to, we'll be here to 3:00 AM, and so that the staff can finally fully get the direction that they need, or I think we have to be a lot more sort of efficient with, with, with this discussion. And we can't, we can't, we can't end at 11:00, not again, if we're spending 40 minutes. And like I said, this is an indictment of myself on this. And, and now that I have ranted on spending too much time, I will, I will be quiet.
I appreciate your rant. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, actually, so for me, I don't, I don't mind it because for me, the library is done. Like, okay, library is done. Next up, I do, for me personally, we hadn't talked about the book, the eBook resource. I'm ready to, to cut into that based on what Sean said this evening. What percentage that we're doing that, I'm happy to talk with you all about. But there's money there and a half million dollar savings out of that discussion, reaffirming the 250 and finding, 270 and finding another 250. It's a half a million bucks of a 1/24th of a, sorry, Betsy? No, so anyway, but, but there you go. So.
So does that mean we're on 31 now instead of 30? Councilmember Nash, you brought up the, the library, 19 and 40, and you're, you're on mute, so I cannot hear you.
Sorry about that.
We cannot hear you.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm done with library. I do want to mention that there is, in addition to the savings, there was the one, I think it's number 19, which is $130,000 charge, which will go against that, just when we're looking at everything. I think it's already in the works. My next, hopefully, really short comment is number 43, Rollback Couch Train Go-Pass Program for Employees. What I want to point out is, well, actually, first of all, I'd love to find out when it expires and then let you know. We got an email from our, from one of our residents, Adina Levin, today. And Caltrain has a new Go-Pass extension that we should just know about as we go forward. And essentially, right now, the board, I think, has authorized or is about to a week-for-week extension of the current 2020 Go-Pass program contracted termination period. So it was December 31st, so I guess there's the answer to my question. And it's going to mirror the term of the shelter-in-place orders, which are currently from March 17th through May 31st. So right now, it would extend to March 2021. So there was a hope that we might certainly consider this as we go forward. Hi, Nikki. And that was all I had to say about it. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Nagaya. Did you have a follow-up about the Go-Pass?
Good, good evening, councilmembers. I, I was just going to respond. I think Councilmember Nash answered her own question about the expiration dates. It is December 31st of 2020. We do budget each fiscal year in advance. And the reason why we targeted this item as a potential service reduction is because the cost has increased significantly since we first joined the program by, by over 80%. And while it is a great benefit for our employees, at the same time, when we're looking at, at making pretty significant reductions in, in service, it was something that, that we looked at the, the overall cost benefit of, similar to, to Mr. Reinhardt's discussion of the library. So I won't, won't beat this further, but regardless, so if the program is extended week-for-week to, say, April 1st, when we'd need to renew for next year, we would still need to budget the amount for next year. And I don't have the, the increased number, but the, the $71,000 that's in the table represented the cost for fiscal, for calendar year 2020. It doesn't account for the planned increase in the cost for calendar year 2021 yet, which we're, we're awaiting from Caltrain. So it, it's a fairly significant cost for the, the overall value. And if the council desires, we could still look at other options to incentivize transit, mo chair for people to get to work, such as paying for monthly passes. It's just a much more cost-effective solution than the Go-Pass right now.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Are there any other follow-up questions on that item? Councilmember Nash?
Just quickly, I think it would be worthwhile if it's a more cost-effective measure to take a look, not spend a tremendous amount of time, but look at the monthly passes. I don't know that we need to bring it back here at all, just for a future, next year.
Okay. Thank you. In the interest of time, how about we look through this list as far as the largest dollar amount and decide whether it's a keeper or not? Is that possible, Mr. Jacobson?
Mayor Taylor, if, if I may, I believe there was actually a motion by Councilmember Carlton to accept everything with, from tables two through four, with the exception of item number 41, which is the police data number. So I think we had.
Mr. Jacobson, I can't hear any.
I apologize. Can you hear me now?
I'm having some difficulty. Yeah, I can hear you. It's, it's me that's having difficulty. So I didn't hear half of what you just said.
Okay, so I was just clarifying that I believe Councilmember Carlton had a motion on the table for tables two through four. And so we were verifying what items were included in tables two through four, with the exception of item number 41, eliminate enhancements to open data.
1 to 48, with the exception of that one item.
So there is a motion on the floor presented by City Councilmember Carlton. Is there a second?
We're missing the mayor right now. I think we need to wait.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Mueller.
I'm checking with IT.
Are you still able to hear us, Mayor Taylor?
Some of the conversation.
Okay.
I can see my screen. I just don't have sound, at least not continuous sound.
Mayor Taylor, the IT people can show you how to call in because I'm having to use my phone for sound this evening. Maybe you could do the same.
Thank you.
Go to audio on the control panel and there'll be details.
I'm wondering if I can possibly talk to the rest of the council and just check on one item that was included and that we had agreed upon, and it's not currently marked. And that would be number 50, the Rollback Events and Encouragement Activities in the Transportation Demand Management and Safe Roads to School Programs. I thought that we agreed that that $60,000 was okay to take off the table or to not take, what was to include in the table.
Just to point out, I'm actually talking about 1 to 49 and was suggesting that we talk about the other items after we deal with 1 to 49.
Got it.
Is that okay? Hello?
Hey, Mayor Taylor, we are able to hear you now. Were you able to connect with your telephone?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, so just returning this motion back to the City Council. It is a motion to approve tables 2A, 3, 4, with the exception of number 41. And the motion is by Carlton. And if I could have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. By roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton.
Yeah, I am. So we, we went through up to 45 or 41? Or to 40? Well, I would like to pull, pull in 45. So if we could take that off. Anything related to cleaning services, I don't want to eliminate.
Okay, so consensus around pulling item reference number 45.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is going to be approving tables 2A, 3, 4, with the exceptions of reference number 41 and 45. Motion by Carlton, second by Combs. Roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton.
Aye.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller? Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yeah.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question about the one that was pulled on the night shift, the social services contract? Is that the one that was $272,000? I'm just curious why, why it was, like, I just don't understand what it is in my own soul.
There was some discussion during the closed session.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question follow-up on that. And so like, I am supportive of the idea of it sort of not being included in the sense that if there's no complete consensus, that it, it's included. But I, would these things like to revisit at some later date in the future, of which I don't know when? That, we'll get to that. But again, what I'm seeing is that, yeah, if there's no consensus, let's remove it and, and move on. But, but I do have concerns because to, that's, that's a quarter of a million dollars and it is a lot to remove and an exercise of sort of, you know, of, of trying to balance the budget to some degree. So, so I just wanted to make it clear why I stood, we don't have to, again, discuss it. But hopefully, these things of which there's no consensus, there will be at some point in time to revisit.
Yes.
Definitely will be.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. If I may continue, this was actually only partway through the presentation, but thank you for taking that official action. One thing that I will notice here, or note here, is that there will be some minor changes to these numbers as they were included through the ones on table 11. So the total deficit decrease up to this point is somewhat less than the 5.6 million that's in the third line of the table there. So moving forward, as the City Council has noted, there are still a number of items left on the table, a number of potential ways to balance the budget. So I want to go through and discuss some of those, revisit some of them and point them out that from previous weeks and answer any questions that council members have at that time. So just by way of reference, the staff recommendation, as it was originally presented on April 28th, with the proposed budget strategy includes $4 million in one-time money or revenues. That is an additional 1.49 million from the numbers that were included in table 11. So I don't have a running total at my fingertips right this second. But it will be a number which is larger than that, and additional service and program changes. And so there are essentially two options for continuing those. There are a number of items that are remaining that can be considered by the City Council. Or there is an option, given the timing and the fact that the budget does need to be adopted by the, by July 1st, which is the beginning of the city's fiscal year, to do sort of a contingency reduction and revisit these numbers in the next fiscal year, given that there will be additional information that is known over the next few months, which may help to revisit some of these items and have additional clarity on what they could be. So there, at the preparation of this, staff believed that there to be a number of items in table 11. So the 41 remaining potential service changes is inclusive of that number. So given that there were a couple of changes by council this evening, that number is larger to the point that was previously made, these can be revisited. So while they may not be included in the, the bundle of approved changes at this point, they can be re-added back in. The budget is not the adopted budget until it is adopted. And even once it is adopted, it can be amended anytime at the council's desire. So one item that I would like to point out that is, will be discussed in the future is childcare. As Mr. Pogres mentioned, additional study is necessary on that one. So that will come back before the council in the month of June. So one item that is available for council's consideration at this point is the adoption of contingency expenditure reduction. It would be in an amount equivalent to the remaining deficit before or after the use of one-time money or revenues at the council's discretion. And the idea would be to do a quarterly review to identify options and needs. These quarterly reviews would be effective at the beginning of each quarter of the fiscal calendar. So that would be October 1st, 2020, January 1st, 2021, and April 1st, 2021. Those are the, the remaining opportunities to review the budget if that were the direction the council desired. As previously shown, there are also a number of one-time money options. These are the, the same balances shown in the staff report. These are the estimates as of the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1st. These, as was previously discussed at a council meeting, the City Council has full discretion, member, the use of these. So there is no restriction or limit on how much the City Council desires to use. The priority tiers are staff's recommendations for which ones are most appropriate to the current situation, the COVID-19 pandemic, or in the case of the second line on there, the opportunity to reduce unfunded pension liability and future interest payments by making additional payments to CalPERS. So tiers two and three are less closely tied to the current pandemic. And tier three in particular are options that are typically only reserved for extraordinary. in particular are options that are typically only reserved for extraordinarily tough budget times and do result in potential future costs down the road.
I have a question.
Yes, please. Madam Mayor, I am unable to hear you.
Okay, I have to unmute myself. Just thinking about this list of one-time money, we only identified one item under assets, but we never asked for an exhaustive list to find out if there was anything else that could be added to this list.
That is correct. So the item that we showed there, 1283 Willow Road, was discussed as it was a purchase in this current fiscal year. So it was the most recent one. It is representative of something that we know the market value of because it was such a recent purchase. But there is, there is the possibility of exploring additional sale of assets. However, again, I would recommend that the sale of assets is a sort of last resort typically taken by organizations and very dire financial streets.
But we do have that option.
Absolutely. There is the option to divest it from assets.
Okay. And I have no idea what else would be added to that list, but just thinking about that we still need to, and I doubt that we would get to it this evening or tonight, was to follow up on CIP as well.
Yes, so there are a number of options related to the CIP. These are the numbers that are presented either for the transfer from the general fund to the general capital fund on an annual basis, the second to last line there, or unused capital funds available in the fund balance at the general capital fund that originated in the general fund. The CIP is typically taken as a core component of the budget in Menlo Park and adopted at the same time. If council does desire to go through that exercise, that is certainly something that staff can put together, but may delay the timeline unless direction is given on the magnitude of what those changes should be from those one-time money sources as a way to prepare the rest, the remainder of this general, the CIP. And I may have to bring in our resident expert, Mr. Gaia, to speak to that further if there are additional questions.
With the CIP, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't that CIP? I believe that everything on CIP was up for discussion. And I believe we started it, but just like this process, haven't completed it as of yet.
So maybe I will allow Mr. Gaia to join and speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I think, as Mr. Jacobson described, the discussion that we started on the capital improvement program in March and continued in late April, we reviewed the status of projects that are currently funded and then began the discussion about whether to defund any of our existing projects. As a result of that discussion, there was a memo that was attached to the staff reports for the May 12th and 19th meetings that identified up to $2.7 million in currently funded projects that could revert back to either reduce the transfer to next year's capital needs or to, sorry, it's starting to get late, stumbled a little bit, to either reduce the transfer for next year's capital needs or to revert back to the general fund to help cover any operating shortfalls for next year. So I think the question about whether there are additional projects in the CIP that the council would want to reconsider, we can certainly have that discussion, but that $2.7 million is what we've identified so far. And then just to clarify, as it relates to the sale of assets, there aren't necessarily assets that are being constructed in the CIP that we would look to sell, but I think similar to what's identified in the, on the slide that Mr. Jacobson was showing was property that the city owns that could be potentially sold for one-time revenues. So there wouldn't be other opportunities to sell assets as a result of that CIP review, but you could look to defund additional projects as part of that review.
Thank you, Mr. Gaia. Councilmember Nash is not able to get back into the meeting, just wanted to let you know. So hopefully she's reached out to IT. It looks like my frame is frozen. I look asleep, but I am not asleep. Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Mr. Jacobson?
Okay, so any further questions on the one-time money options? So another lever that's available to the city council at their discretion is revenue options. So these have a variety of sources. We talked about them briefly before. The utility users tax is currently at a reduced rate of 1%. It goes up to 2.5% for communications utilities and 3.5% for gas, electric, and water. So those maximum rates could be, the temporarily reduced rate could be allowed to lapse, sending them back to the maximum rate and increasing the available revenue available to the city. That estimate is 1.92 million. That is, starting on October 1st, the current rate reduction runs through September, the end of September of this year. So it's not perfectly aligned with the city's fiscal year and can be changed with a 60 days' notice if the city council desired to temporarily reduce it again in the future. Another option is business license tax lifting a gross receipt cap and continuing the proportional marginal rate through a higher limit. There's an estimated revenue available there of just over 1 million. And then the other items on this table are user fee study, which would tie providing services in the time of social distancing and changed service provision to the actual cost of providing those services. There is some lead time requirement on that, and dependent on council's desire for cost recovery, the estimated revenue there is variable. And then the transient occupancy tax or hotel tax could be, the rate could be increased. And again, there's a great deal of variability there, as there's little known in terms of what the revenues look like for the next year. There's a very wide range of possibilities, given that being one of the most affected areas of the city's budget. And just by way of a quick note there, the business license gross receipt tax and TOT increase both do require voter approval.
Mr. Jacobson, we have a question from Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. So couldn't we change the user fees just by increasing the recovery expectations and not actually going through a new study? And how would we, I believe that's just a council and city manager decision?
So, so there are actually a couple of components to that. So the city council could direct that the cost recovery policy be amended in order to increase the amount recovered for a variety of services that are charged to users. However, that would also include changing the master fee schedule, which does require some work. It would be required to come back before council to actually adopt the new fees. So certainly, that could be used for those services, which will not substantially change in terms of their service provision. However, for things which are likely to change more substantially, there would be multiple steps required, and a fee study would be recommended there.
But if we're not covering, if we're not collecting a full fee right now, we could increase it now and still be ahead of the game without having to wait for a consultant studying it, correct?
Yes, and so that would be, that would just be a change to the city's cost recovery policy to say that it should be a greater cost recovery percentage and then amending the master fee schedule, which does not require any additional outside work by consultants.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I was just going to make a point with regard to that policy. Traditionally, we charge people who take classes at Menlo Park who do not live in the city more because of the fact that our textile is kind of subsidized for the people who live in Menlo Park. We can choose to bring up the price for the people who live in Menlo Park, but I just wanted to also point out that we could also change our policy on how much we charge people who live in, for example, Palo Alto, who come here for classes as well. So it's not completely across the board. There's also a policy factor. Sorry, everyone's frozen. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My screen has everyone visually frozen. So I was just going to say that while that's a good suggestion, we also, there's a little bit of a policy aspect to that with regard to determining how much more people pay who do not live in Menlo Park, who take advantages of the services and the classes that we have here.
Yes, that is correct. There are in a number of categories distinctions between resident or non-resident fees.
Councilmember Nash?
I just want to, along that line, I've got the user fee study, and it generally, it says non-resident fees are in the medium category, it looked like. So we do definitely have some room if we decide to do that, which I would, I would like to look at these cost recoveries at some point.
Councilmember Mueller?
I just realized that Dan's still doing his presentation, which means Dan's still doing his presentation. We haven't taken public comment yet.
No, we have not. Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Ms. Herring, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Public comment was not being accepted on this item because we've accepted it twice already. However, if you would like to change that now, we can call for live public comment.
Councilmember Mueller?
I just felt bad because he was, just Dan was still presenting. So if Dan was still presenting, we're supposed to take public comment. I just thought, I felt bad for people who are waiting, but if it wasn't on the agenda and there's no expectation of that, I'm fine with proceeding.
So are we in a grant that we will proceed without public comment?
That's how it was agenda, so I'm fine with it that way, if that's what everyone else is.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Okay, so if there are no additional questions or comments about the revenue, I just wanted to wrap up by reviewing the requested direction that staff is looking for tonight. We are looking for additional direction on the developing the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 21. That could be, or that includes additional budget balancing measures. I've been informed by Mr. Pogaros that there is a $7.3 million deficit still remaining after the adopted item, or the items that council approved tonight. That can be composed partially of, partially or fully of one-time money or revenue at the council's discretion. It can be done on a line-by-line basis, or it can be done as a contingency number and planning to revisit that at a later time. And if council does give direction to approve additional budget balancing measures, which remove current staffing to authorize issuance of playoff notices to those affected staff. And so with that, I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jacobson? I think we are all nearing sleep.
So by way of reminder, this is where we left off. So item number 48 was the last item, individual item that was approved by council tonight. So at the council's desire, we could review the individual items or take questions on those if the council so desires.
Councilmember Nash?
I have a question about item number 50, and I actually thought this is, actually, I guess it's right there on the, I thought that the council, I thought we decided that that was an item that we could check and that we were going to proceed with that. I thought we discussed that last, last meeting on the 19th.
So I am actually going to defer to City Manager Sarah Jerome Robinson to address that one first, if you don't mind.
Or we can just take another vote for consensus.
That would be my preference.
It's the vote on it?
Yes.
This is Safe Routes? Put my glasses on.
Betsy, you're on mute.
Thank you so much. It's getting late. This one is the TDM, Transportation Demand Management and Safe Routes to School, but it's the events and encouragement activities portion of it. So it's $60,000 to rollback events and encouragement activities in the transportation demand management and safe routes to school programs. So it's something with...
And this item isn't funded by a development agreement? Isn't there an item that's under a development agreement that covers something around safe routes to school?
I don't know.
Maybe I'm crossing things. Mr. Gaia?
Good evening, councilmembers. So there are no funds from development agreements that cover the safe routes to school programs, so those are totally city of Menlo Park general funds that have covered that program since its inception a couple of years ago. I believe Facebook has made a contribution to school districts directly to cover the cost of crossing guards. So that may be the item that you were thinking of, but there's, there's no development agreement funds for the safe routes program.
So the, are we voting on this item? Who wants to keep it? Am I on mute? No.
No, this is Judy. If I could have the motion stated, just for the record.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
The council doesn't need to take line-by-line action. What we will do is we will note that the council wants to leave the reduction on the list, and then we can follow back with a summary of total and so that we can keep tabs of this. Maybe in the interest of time, we can do five or five to 10 items at a time, vote on those and then come back.
Thank you, Mr. Pogaros, for that clarification. Councilmember Carlton?
I was going to move that we strike everything between 50 and 59 and then discuss that and then move forward. And as we discuss it, keeping as Councilmember Combs brought forward, an idea of time. Would anyone like to second 50 to 59 and then we discuss that and move forward?
Wait, what about 49?
Okay, 49 to 59, how's that?
Well, 53, if I'm not mistaken. Cara, do you have an update? We received an email about this one. So we can pull this one off of there in the interest of time, and Cara, you can follow up with this.
Knowing that some of them are going to be pulled, but let's just handle this 10 block, 10 items at a time.
Okay. Councilmember Nash?
All right. Last, last meeting on the 19th was, last meeting, we discussed number four and reduce long-range planning projects and number 51, reduce capacity in transportation division. We had an extensive discussion about those and decided to take them off the list. They are not to be cut. And I would strongly recommend, I would... And I would strongly recommend I would I strongly support that.
I support it as well.
Which one was that? 51 and and 40, 59?
49.
The long-range planning, 49 and 51. We discussed last time.
Do you guys want to leave 49 on? Okay. And you well, I mean.
No, we wanted.
You want to take it off the list? Okay. And I'm happy.
To be.
Right. What I'm going to say is similar to what Councilmember Combs said, I'm happy to just deal with the stuff with consensus now and then we can revisit what was pulled from the list. So I'm not so I mean, $600,000 is a lot of money. There might be something internally in there that we can look at different projects and what they are. I didn't think we have reached complete consensus on 49, actually. And actually, transportation capacity, I thought those were temporary workers that were identified. So but I'm happy because there's not consensus now to take it off the list, but I would potentially like to revisit that. I do I personally proactive parking enforcement, I don't think we talked about.
No.
And I'm not sure that I want to get get rid of proactive parking enforcement. So I think that there's yeah, I think there's also a net cost to that, too, like goes both ways. So go ahead, Drew.
Yeah, if I could just chime in on that point, too, because of this this grouping, that's the only one that I wanted to to pull. I'm specifically concerned about the overnight parking enforcement and less concerned about the sort of the downtown parking enforcement. And so if if, you know, again, I don't know if there's support for the council, but if we were going to proceed down this line of looking to eliminate parking enforcement, I would want to see some split, if possible, of the cost for for those those two. Like I said, I am I'm supportive of keeping overnight parking enforcement and I would be willing to have a debate about whether whether we have the parking enforcement done and, you know, during the day, specifically in the downtown area.
Okay, so it looks like we just pulled 800,000 out of the no, we just pulled a million bucks off the list, but the rest of it's good.
Councilmember Nash.
So I actually was in error at 51. I am not it's 69 that I'm actually anyway, it's further down the list. I'm it's 51 is I am not going to if we need to cut, we need to cut.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thanks, Betsy. I thought I remembered that. I thought 51 was we looked at that and that was temporary workers and Nikki said it would work out. So.
Temporary workers are the senior folks who we've got in and those are working on Middle Avenue and the Caltrain electrification, and those are the ones that I want to I do not want cut. Are they?
That's number 51.
What's 51? So what's 51?
That's 51.
So item 65 is the two temporary staff who are the senior project managers that have been assisting with the capital projects. Item 51 are two vacancies in the transportation division that we would freeze and then reduce the capacity of the team. There's also an assistant director level position that's itemized elsewhere on the list. So you talked about all three of them last week, but just to clarify, those are the three categories.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Councilmember Carlton.
Yeah. 9 to 59. Let's discuss those and get through 10, those 10.
Councilmember Mueller.
So I'm fine with I'm fine. So it sounds like we're okay with 51 staying on the list, but just to give Nikki a heads up, and here's my opportunity to talk about it. I I would like at some point for us to to talk with an expert about looking at this budget and making and talk with us about strategies for getting ready for recovery. And I think that what we're doing tonight is important, but I think there are people with public policy budgeting experience who advise much larger elected much larger elected bodies, how to go ahead and prepare budgets in recessions. And so to give you guys an example, I had a conversation this week with one at Harvard who's agreed to do a panel with me in June on this subject and reaching out to there's another professor who identified at Stanford who are reaching out to the purpose of trying to work with us and looking at this budget to try to get set up. So it may be that we think this is a smart thing to do in transportation and we're going to go and talk to an expert who's going to say, actually, when you're trying to get ready for recession, to come out of recession and recovery, you want to look at increasing capacity in these areas and then look at these areas so you increase revenue. So I just very much want to raise that issue with you guys again at some point, sitting down with a with a some 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 folks with some credentials to sit down with our team and just answer questions around that.
Mr. Jacobson, you came back on. Did you have a question or a comment?
So if I may, so two two points to that. One is the element of urgency here. There is only so much time for the city staff to prepare a city manager's proposed budget and absent direction tonight, city staff will be unable to prepare a proposed budget. If the council's desire is to incorporate outside recommendations, I might recommend using the contingency budget avenue, in which case the council gives staff direction to for the magnitude of how much revenue or one-time money resources to use and how much should be eliminated in terms of services and revisit the budget and with the purpose of amending it once it's adopted and in the next fiscal year.
Yes, my response is I don't want to use the contingency budget to do that. What I think we should do candidly is get as far as we can tonight. My guess is we're not going to get all the way there. Look at doing a budget for a specific period of time with the carryforward of all the cuts we have tonight and then prepare that budget that way with the carryforward, understanding what we still haven't dealt with for the rest of the year and then getting advice on that from from that external from those external parties. Or we could just go ahead and pass a budget, a full budget tonight and then look at and get that advice later on and get get and then amend our budget. So which which we can obviously all do as well. So both those things would work, but I wouldn't want to I wouldn't I I don't think anyway, those those are my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Are any follow-up comments? Go back to Councilmember Nash and then Councilmember Carlton.
I guess I'm just confused as to exactly how we're proceeding, and I think that there was a proposal to do maybe 10 at a time, but I think that's too many. I think we either need to go quickly, line by line, just up, down or something, or do it like five at a time, but 10 at a time, I'm getting lost.
So if we could just go sequentially and then I think we can all track. And so I if I could just start out with that, I think at the last meeting, the council told us to reduce to eliminate 48 from the budget, keep 49 in the budget, keep 50 in the budget, keep 51 in the budget, eliminate number 52 from the budget, and that brings us to 53.
Okay, and that's 53. I think Cara followed up Cara followed up with us as far as the funding for that because that's a part of the development agreement. Some of those funds were.
It's not. It's my understanding that we could reutilize those 60,000 for potentially for a different purpose. So.
Well, if that purpose is going to be spent in the same area, I would support it. But if it's not, then I won't support it.
That was right. My understanding is we might be able might be able to use it for shuttles between the two campuses.
But don't we use measure one of the measure A funds or measure K funds for a shuttle service already?
This would be specifically for Bellhaven neighbors to go to the library or the the pool if this pool was not open.
Can we have two different line items? Because I think it's really confusing to leave it on and then not to say or put it in the description because I think we need to keep things pretty clear because there's already a lot of confusion as to what's on and what's off.
I I'm not following you.
So you're saying keep the 60,000 in, but use it for shuttles?
I'm saying potentially we could. So or you could just say it's potentially $150,000 in savings and we could come up with a different use or a discussion about 60,000 at a later point and just count the 150.
I'm completely lost now. Are we on item numbers 50 and 51?
53.
53.
Okay. When we get a chance, I'd like to go back to 50 and 51. That's why I'm confused. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's go back to 50 then. Last time, the council told us not to cut 50 and not to cut 51. Are you giving us different direction tonight?
I think we said do cut 50, but don't cut 51, but we may be giving you different directions today.
Okay.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yeah, I'm kind of irritated. If we had to get through this budget tonight, if this had to be approved tonight, we should have had nothing else on this on this agenda. We should have sat down and we should have been doing this since 5 o'clock. Now, we have, let me see, we've got about 35 items, 36 items in front of us, and I don't know, maybe an hour of good time left, which gives us about two minutes each. This means if we're going to go through these line by line, we need to have a two-minute discussion max, which means we look at number 49, we identify what it is, we say yes, no, or we need further discussion. We bring back the further discussion when for further discussion, but we need to get through these and we can't keep discussing how we're discussing it. This is ridiculous.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. I share your frustration. Councilmember Mueller.
All right, guys, we'll get through it. So number 50, I my impression is number 50 was a cut. And actually, 51, I don't recall saying we weren't going to cut 51. What was identified tonight was two unfilled positions and then another and then another position. So those are positions that aren't those are positions that aren't occupied. And then so those are those we do have the ability to cut those, and I thought we just all talked about that a second ago. So I'm fine.
Yes.
So I'm fine with cutting 51. I'm kind of I'm fine with cutting 50. The and so we have consensus on that. Everyone's saying yes.
Yeah.
We can revisit that later. We need to.
Starla.
Starla, is that so now you have a direction on that now? You you're good?
Can I just confirm you are cutting 50?
We're cutting 50 and we're cutting 51.
Okay.
All right. The management analyst position is unfilled, right?
Ray, when you say cutting, you mean leaving in, right? Leaving.
We're leaving in to be cut from the budget. We're leaving them into oh, that's the problem. There those are cuts. We're cutting them there. We're leaving them on the list to be cut from the budget. So 50.
The words are cut or say.
All right, so 50, 51 are cuts. 52 is an unfilled position, right?
Correct.
All right. I would suggest I think, okay, so that's a cut. And that's something that we all know on council affects our ability to do stuff like we're well aware that's coming out of the manager, that's coming out of your office. So that's a cut. 53, I don't know what's going on there, but it's something we're not going to be able to work on tonight. So I think that's fair from what I've heard. 50, 54.
Fair, leave it in, cut it.
Leave it in because there's not consensus on it.
Okay.
54, is there consensus? I don't know.
I do not support cutting it.
Can I have clarity on 53? Is that to leave on the list or to take off the list?
Take off the list.
Take off the list.
There's not consensus. We're just trying to get all the stuff we have consensus on now.
53 goes into the discuss later column, the three columns, keep, save, or discuss later.
Okay.
Thank you, Kat.
I'm going to pass it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so uh oh, I'll go to my computer. Won't worry about it. So 54, well, I do not support cutting. So not sure what anyone else thinks. And I do not have a screen right now.
May I?
I can only see myself and Drew at the moment. Yes, Councilmember Carlton.
Sure. Having having been through construction zones, I'm not I think we we leave that for discuss because I don't know how the pool might work depending on on what the plans are for the how the construction goes. It may be able to work, it may not dysfunctionally.
I think.
And we must work to make that call.
So are you talking about 53 or 54?
54.
So that is not the pool. That's to keep the center open through the end of the year.
I meant the pole, 53.
Okay. So was there any any input on 54? We want to put that on the discuss side.
I say, yeah, let's discuss that later.
Okay. So and I think 55 reduced Bellhaven Branch Library, if I'm not mistaken, we gave input on this already.
Yes, yes, and that was to keep it on the cut list.
And then 56?
Keep on the cut list.
Yeah.
Okay. We're still in agreement?
I actually I actually, based on what Sean shared tonight, I'm fine with pulling this from the cut list.
Which one?
Reduced main library hours. So what Sean said tonight to us was don't cut my hours, but take but get rid of the PLS and get rid of the but reduce book e-resource budget.
Ray, I think we should leave it on the the list and we can always put it back later, but we need money and we're still.
Okay, I mean, if I'm if you guys are if that's that's fine, we can leave it on the list for now. But that's one I that's one I I probably will come come back to because I really want to I appreciate you gave us a half million cuts in those spots. So let's keep going.
Okay. 57. Bellhaven Branch Library remains closed through December. So I don't know how 55 and 57 are related, but anything library, we just put that to discuss later. We already talked 58, didn't we?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just to to leave on the cut list.
Okay, 59, suspend proactive parking enforcement, which I'm a supporter of overnight parking enforcement. I see what's happening over on the Nalto, several streets in Menlo Park. So and I had somebody actually stop by my house and expressed her dismay with all the cars on the street.
Yeah, I think we pulled that.
Yeah.
So we'll have that as a discuss.
Yeah, and my my request on that to staff would be if you could break out overnight and and just sort of normal daytime enforcement, if that's possible. If not, then that's fine, but I would like to see those those two different numbers.
Great.
I support that.
Madam Mayor, for the tally, we have the reductions that have been identified in these last 10 items. We've added we've reduced an additional 993,000 from the budget preliminarily, of course, and our new target is 6.5 million.
50.
So we are on 60.
Yep.
On 60 and 59 together, and we already decided to keep that. So moving on to 61. Eliminate police community engagement programs, online property crime reports.
Well, are just really quickly, are 60 and 59 the same? So 60 is code enforcement, which is.
Oh, they're not.
Yeah, so I'm fine with 60 staying like again, 59, let's move off and discuss later. I'm fine with 60 staying as an item to be cut.
Now, this is our only code enforcer, and we have one to cover our entire city.
But we're not cutting we're not cutting the code enforcer. We're just saying that they're only going to respond to reactive calls. They're not going to go out looking for code for code violations.
Right.
Right. Could we please get an, I am against this depending, well, let's hear what Chief Bertini.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yeah, please.
Uh, no, currently we have two code enforcement officers. The second code enforcement officer was an enhancement last year that was approved and so that we could be a little bit more proactive. This would actually be cutting that and rolling back that enhancement and going from two code enforcement officers to one. So it would, it would be a layoff of the code enforcement officer. And so the code enforcement efforts were, would go back to being reactive again. And the one code enforcement officer would have the entire city all, all to herself again. And, and we'd be back to where we started.
Chief, is this officer in the POA?
These are, these are not sworn officers. They're civil, it's, it's a civilian position.
These are civilian, so are they part, are they, they're part of SEIU?
Correct.
Councilmember Nash?
We can't hear you.
I think we need both code enforcement people. I, I do not want to see this cut. We've got a whole city. We've got people where they may not be doing as many, they may not be keeping up their, the apartments and homes rentals as well. And we strongly need help in this area. We had a really bad situation in my district and thank you for taking care of it. I think this is a really critical area. And two people to cover the whole city is not a lot.
So, is the consensus to leave this as a discuss?
Yes, let's put this on the discuss list in the interest of time. Okay, anything related to childcare, we are not discussing?
61, Madam Mayor, 61.
61, oh, thank you.
So, I have a question for my colleagues, because I'm not sure. For 83, 84, and 85, is everyone in agreement that that's, that's coming off the?
We're not there yet, are we?
Oh, sorry.
We're on 61.
Oh, okay, never mind. So, so.
Councilmember Carlton had her hand up, just a moment, Mr.
Yeah, I was wondering about 62 and 64.
Okay, okay.
I'm comfortable cutting back on community engagement. It's, it's wonderful to have and I love the police doing it, but right now, is that something that we can cut back on?
We have a consensus on that? Okay. 61 is cut. Councilmember Mueller, you had a question with 62 and 63?
I don't have a question with 62, but I thought, I didn't know if any of my colleagues did.
Okay, 64.
Great. I'm just confused. I thought we were not discussing childcare tonight and then I thought it was, okay, good.
It's going to discuss.
Mr. Pagaro, you said something. At least I thought you did.
62 and 63 are discuss, so they're not a focus for cuts.
Okay. Councilmember Nash?
With 64, I'm concerned about cutting something that helps with OpenGov and helping get more transparency with our finance.
I support that. But do you want to discuss it?
Discuss?
Yes. Okay, 65, roll back temporary staff capacity for special cap, special capital and regional coordination projects. Councilmember Nash?
This is the one we discussed at length last time and decided to leave it in. Thank you. It is not going to be cut.
To take it off the list.
Take it off them, yes.
I didn't know that we'd all reach consensus on that, but.
We have not. We, there is no consensus.
We did not?
No.
No, I think that's a discuss.
Okay, put it on the discuss list.
Yes.
We may be crossing projects here, which can easily be done. Okay.
Councilmember Nash spoke very passionately about it, which was very much appreciated, but there was, nonetheless, no consensus arrived at it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Number 66, reduce contract inspection and plan review services. Don't we need this project? I'm sorry, Councilmember Carlton, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I was just saying that with all the, the discussion we've had about making sure that people can get back in their houses that are 90% there, we need to leave that so that, that people can get back in their homes.
I agree.
So, so leave that, I mean, by, by removing it from the cut list.
Okay.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to cut replacing signs.
Okay, reduce sign replacement. Isn't there, we have, Councilwoman Carlton said she's happy to cut it. There are consensus on cutting. Okay. And 68, eliminate an accounting assistant.
An unfilled physician?
It says eliminate. So, my assumption is that's someone's job now.
Yes, there, there would be a layoff in this.
We don't need it.
Well, are they working right now?
Yes.
Yeah, let's put that, I would like to put that in the discuss, so we would understand what the impact is.
I agree.
I just don't understand, I just don't understand what their job is right now, so I'd like to come back to that.
Well, 69 is straightforward, reduce development review. This is freezing two positions. Any thoughts on it? Cut, keep, discuss? Councilmember Carlton?
I think Betsy was first.
We're probably gonna.
Nash?
Thank you. We're probably going to say the same thing. I would, I do not want to see this cut. We need to, construction going and development, yeah.
Now, this is an unfilled position, right? Or these are unfilled positions that are being referred to here?
Yes.
Yes, two. I mean, so look, if, if we're not cutting unfilled positions, I, I appreciate, again, the, you know, the, the need for planning review, the need for that not to be a bottleneck. But, again, these positions aren't filled and so we're saying that, like, prioritize hiring them. I, I just, you know, I don't know what progress we're making. I'll be quiet now. You can go.
I'm not sure.
Oh, I guess, i- is it being filled by a contract person or is it truly vacant? How is the work getting done right now? Because otherwise, good point, Drew.
Mr. Pagaro?
This is Ju- Justin, this is Justin Murphy. They're both vacant. The work is not.
They're both vacant. Okay.
That's part of the, part of the challenge we have.
Okay. Councilmember Nash?
So, how does this relate to getting development projects planned, SB 330 and EIR?
Can we put this on the discuss list? Thank you. Either that or I would support cutting it.
Yeah, I, I don't want to hire extra people, but I don't want to hinder that if they're, I don't know if people can move laterally. It's a longer discussion.
Okay. And in the interest of time, we need to vote to stay past 11.
So moved.
I, I actually have concerns, guys. So how long do you guys want to go? Because this isn't, what we're doing tonight isn't, I do understand that we want to get it done, but this is like, I, I've seen bad decisions made past a certain hour that people regret and didn't spend enough time on. So, if it means having another meeting.
Councilmember Nash?
I was just going to say, the final review, and I just, I think we're cruising, just keep going and get through it and then we can always review it later.
We have about 20 items left.
I, I'm supportive of that. It, it seems like, you know, some, 70% has ended up on the discuss later. So, if, if, if we go through this list and we're able to actually sort of remove by consensus, you know, five items, then, then I think it's, it's worth the effort. But I understand where Councilmember Mueller is coming from.
11:30, 11:30?
Let's say 11:45.
11:30. I'll go with Councilmember Mueller with 11:30.
All right.
I mean, sleep by midnight. Okay.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I, I do think though, and I'm not trying to jump order, but like, we, we still have not discussed gymnastics, right? And that's at the end of this list essentially. And that is something we've gotten lots of, of emails. And so I do think we, we have an obligation to, to discuss that during this meeting. But let's, let's get back on track.
Good. Number 70?
Madam Mayor, if I may, just quickly summarize from items 60 through 69. The council has agreed to leave on the list for reductions, number 61 and number 67, which, and all the other items were either, were mostly discussed, there was one to remove. So the new target is 6.1 million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Pagaro. Okay, we are on number 70, with freeze IT support specialists. Well, I needed IT this evening. Don't know about anybody else.
This is a vacant position. I, I'm fine with leaving this on.
I'm fine leaving it on.
Okay. 71, reduce contract planning services.
And it's not, it's, we should be hiring people now.
Agreed.
Okay with that. 70, Councilmember Nash?
So, I would like to at least discuss this. We're talking about.
We're going to leave it on. Leave it to cut or are we removing it from the cut?
No.
Leaving it.
We are looking at number 71, correct?
Yeah.
So it says reduction. I would like to discuss it. I won't go into it, but I would like to discuss it, please. I think it's.
Councilmember Mueller, do you have, do you have an opinion on this?
I think we'll go with, if someone wants to discuss it, we need to discuss it.
Okay. Next item is freeze inspection services, it's a vacant position.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cut.
I, I candidly don't. So, we already have, I think, my understanding is we are already pretty depleted in inspection. Like, we, we don't have very many inspectors. So, I don't know what the impact of that would be if we froze this. It's like a major choke point, is my understanding right now, for people. So maybe we might, we might want to ask Justin what the impact of that would be. Like, we have a hard time keeping them and they're a major choke point. So I'm not sure I want to freeze that one.
So let's discuss that later. I'm sorry.
Sure, we can just, let's discuss it later, that's fine.
So, we 73, or we're?
73.
Mayor Taylor, you might be muted.
What? Yes, I am. It's so much easier when it's on the screen. Okay, 73. Reduce contract building services. Any thoughts, opinions?
I'm fine with this staying on.
I don't know the, I don't, can we ask Justin what the impact is? I mean, this is like one of those cuts that I'm worried about, that, do you make it or is there, or is it something you bring on later in terms of making, helping to empower your recovery?
And this is a tier three. All of these are tier three right now that we're looking at.
Right, so I'm just, yeah, so that.
So this is, Justin, if, given the number of items that are to be discussed, this is one that could be revisited later in the year, when, when there's that actual need for it. So there's, there is going to be some money for the contract services. This is a, a partial reduction. So if the, if the demand really picks up, we would be coming back to council for a request at that point in time.
Okay, then I'm happy, I'm fine with it staying on the cut list.
Thank you. Okay, number 74, miscellaneous operating reduction.
If it starts off with miscellaneous, I think you have to cut it.
That's a good. Okay, consensus on cutting that item. Number 75, reduced patrol.
I think that comes off. I think.
Comes off.
Yeah, that comes off. I don't want to reduce the patrol.
Is that going to go on the discussion?
I don't even want to put it, well, so here's the thing on this.
I think there's a lot discussed with regards to patrol.
Okay, we can put it on the discuss list. Eliminate traffic, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I think the reduction in police services was going to boil down to one specific approach, right? And so, I, I don't, of which we have yet to come to a consensus on. So, given that lack of consensus, I don't think we need to sort of necessarily go through and discuss the police.
So I thought eliminate traffic, was I wrong? I thought we reached a consensus that cut, cut traffic was, was staying on the list. I thought reduced patrol is coming off the list.
I thought that was something that we were discussing further in closed session.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just keep going, guys. Put it on the discuss list and go on.
So wait, is traffic unit, traffic unit stays on the cut list, though, right? We're all in agreement? Okay.
I, I'm actually not in agreement, but not to, we can, yeah, we'll, we'll just discuss it later.
So you want traffic to, to come off the list right now?
Keep, keep it on there. Well, let's, let's, let's keep it on there.
Okay. 911, I would have off. We've already heard me go on about how important I think 911 is. I, I don't want to beat a dead horse.
Okay. Number 78, eliminate proactive investigations, including gang and narcotics.
Again, I would say that, like, the approach to police services reductions have to be looked at holistically. And, and so, again, that, that's like specifically my approach when, when we're actually talking about sworn officers and any reductions, that, I, I think we have to make a decision holistically instead of like, separate it out by specific line items. But that's, that's, that's just my opinion.
I, yeah, I wouldn't touch.
I agree.
I wouldn't touch. The only one on this one that I would feel comfortable touching this evening is the traffic unit, because I know it's been cut in the past and we added it back. So.
Well, the idea of looking at it holistically instead of in pieces makes sense, since they're all connected.
We actually, in the past, we just cut the tra, the traffic unit was just cut and then added back, like it was a, a line item.
That's true. So, Councilmember Mueller, you're talking about pulling 78, 79 for further discussion?
Yeah, so everything, so we're do so basically 75, 77, 78, 79, all polled, 76 left for cut.
Great, Madam Mayor, the total for items 70 through 79 is 1.3 million, which brings the deficit down to 4.77 million. And so we're in striking distance depending on what the council wants to do with one-time revenue. Or, I'm sorry, one-time.
But we're still at 80 now.
Thank you, yes. Thank you. Yes. 80, Reduce Parts and Landscape Areas Maintenance.
I think half of that can be pulled out. We still, we have the obligation of do no harm. And it has been proven through multiple lawsuits and, and a lot of scientific work that round up damages children. And we need to pull that out. Some of this is replace the slide. Don't need to do that, but I think we need to tease that, that aspect out. So I would.
Okay. Ms. Nagaya, there was a public comment, this was, I don't remember, it could have been two days ago, a week ago, that talked about chemicals being used. And I know that you had a follow-up to that and never was able to say it publicly. At any rate, this is on the discuss list, right? Councilmember Nash.
So as Councilmember Carlton just said, I do not want to go back using herbicides. I do want to further investigate why Palo Alto is able to do it without an increase in costs. And I also believe, as someone just said, that some of these definitely can still stay in. So we need to get back some more refined information, I think, on this.
Okay. And I believe that our, some of our staff met with or spoke to some of the Palo Alto staff on this item. So.
Me too.
So 81, Reduce Capacity for Land Development and Public Right-of-Way. Cut, discuss, cheat.
I don't know what it means.
It's similar to a lot of previous discussions about whether we're free, it's going to be reduced turnaround times. This is a frozen position. So it's pretty, pretty similar.
It's a frozen position. Is it one that you can bring back when the economy starts moving again? Or is it one that's going to hurt you now?
Yeah, since the biggest hurt is ones that are currently filled. So a frozen position on the spectrum is less impactful.
All right, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it on. I'm fine with leaving it on.
Sorry. For some reason I can't see everybody. You're okay leaving it on?
Councilmember Nash, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm fine with leaving it on. And then when the economy picks up again, they can come to us and say, hey, we need more people. But the economy will picked up, so we'll be able to afford it.
So I think all of this is, we're sort of not getting to the core of the issue, which is what services in the city are core and cannot be done elsewhere and what services in the city are more elective and you can find, you can actually, if the city doesn't provide them, you can go somewhere else. And to me, a lot of these construction, people have to go to the city and get their building permits. They cannot do it anywhere else. So I think that, I'm not going to disrupt us right now, but I think I would like to have a discussion later on when we have this big broader discussion about where we are spending our money and what it means for the, for residents, right?
Yep. And I agree with you, but I think the thing that, and one of the reasons why I really do want to have the study session with you all with that, with, with staff and with it, with some experts, some external experts on this, is I do think that there are some things that you budget in relationship to the economy that, and Justin touched upon it tonight, that when the economy starts moving again, then you're ready to go and you add it. And there are some things that you do, like we're doing, right? Like the decision we made around childcare was largely around the decision that, hey, we need that as a baseline for the economy to start moving again. Because people are going to have to put their kids there. And so there's just decisions that we need. So it's all about what's our strategy? And I agree with you. What, like, understanding how the, how the cuts fit into that strategy of getting things moving again, right on the same page. But I appreciated Justin's comments tonight because I think that that's, I think that's accurate, that we'll be able to, when the economy starts moving up again, they'll know. And then they'll say, we need the positions. And we'll say, well, the economy is moving again, we can afford it. But right now, not so much.
Except that there's building on, there's so much building going on right now in construction that we have to make sure that we are how we are moderating that.
Yeah, because, because he said that it was, because he already had the position unfilled and he said it was, I rely, I'm relying on it. He said, it's already filled. It's not as big of a hit.
Okay.
Recap, that was to leave eight, number 81 on the list.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so 82, Reduce Tree Maintenance Capacity and Forego Implementation of New Heritage Tree Ordinance Requirement. Councilmember Nash.
So I want to know how this fits with the, what we just looked at with the G4, the landscape assessment, which basically where we are collecting fees to do tree maintenance. And don't have to hear it tonight, but I think that we need to make sure that we're, we are maintaining our tree canopy and that we're actually using the fees that we are collecting to save that tree canopy. The other piece of it with the heritage tree ordinance, I want, I think we need to have some, we should either keep the one that we have or implement the new one, but not totally get rid of everything. So I guess my question is to staff is, are they, is this implying that you keep the current ordinance and we're just not implementing the new one?
So this has two different components. And again, with some of the way these are presented, they've got multiple aspects. So as it relates to the heritage tree ordinance, there was the potential for increased costs associated with implementing that. We're in the process of identifying what those specifics are. We, we do believe that we're going to be better off by going, following through with implementing the new ordinance. And we're trying to minimize the costs associated with that as much as possible. So as we can spend the time on that, we will be working to minimize the costs associated with it. The other part about the tree trimming has to do with what was discussed earlier tonight with the landscape assessment district. So this, this would involve a reduction over what was presented earlier tonight. Our, our current practice is a five-year trimming cycle. This is seven years. This would be a reduction.
So would we be out of compliance, if that's the appropriate word, with the landscape assessment district that we just spoke about if we leave this on the list to be cut? In other words, how do those two?
We would have to reconcile it. And again, this was presented a few weeks ago and tonight was the last night that we could get the landscape assessment district on there. So it's a work in progress. So I, my basic question for you would be to whether you want to discuss it later or leave it on the list. And we'll work through that reconciling.
Does anyone else have any input on this item? Councilmember Carlton.
Is this a person that we need to hire or someone we're going to lay off?
No.
There's, there's no layoffs associated with that.
Okay, it's just, it's just fewer hours for hourly workers? Hello?
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, let's see. So the, yeah, so it's the, the biggest component would be the reduction in our contract, which is WCA, which is tied to the landscape assessment district. So that's kind of the subject of that earlier staff report. So it's a contract, the bulk of it, for simplicity, would be the contract service.
So I'm, I'm kind of, this is, goes into one of those other areas where I'm kind of surprised sometimes when we collect fee for something and yet we find out it doesn't cover itself. Obviously, maybe we're not collecting enough of a fee if it's not paying for itself. Can we reduce it in as much? If we're collecting a fee for something, we should provide that much service? So is there a middle ground on this? Or is this something we need to discuss later? Otherwise, one year of maybe not trimming a tree, doing triage where we do the ones that are the real problem, can we skirt by because we're in a financial or is this something that's going to critically impact people?
It's going to, this is something that's going to catch up, catch up with us. We had a series of years where we were unable to keep up with the work and we've just made a lot of progress. So that we would be moving backwards if we were to pursue the reduction in the WCA contract, for sure.
Councilmember Nash.
Can we put this on the discuss later so we can keep moving? Please?
So there's a consensus to put this on discuss?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, 84, 85, I'm sorry, 80, yeah, 84 and 85 are childcare, and 83, childcare related. So those are on the discuss list. Next number is 86, which is the gymnastics program.
Okay. Any thoughts on a gymnastics program? Councilmember Carlton.
I think that we have a fantastic gymnastics program. However, I'm not really sure it's appropriate that we should be paying for their retirement and, and all the things that go with that. I think this is the perfect time for, we're now, it's a co-op where the current management takes over and runs it as a third party, or whether we do an RFP in the same way that we did for the pool. But I think this is a, a good time to look at thinning off gymnastics. And I'm not saying that we change what we have. It could still be the same people. We could bring in another manager who still has the same people running. But I think this is a, a good time for looking at the really long-term aspect financially of this program and its impact on the city.
I have a question on this for staff. Are there any plans to reactivate the gymnastics program? Like, are those plans that are in the works? What phase of reopening does with that fit into?
Yeah, Councilor Vice Mayor Combs, I'll take a quick pass at that, at this. The, the nature of the program provided with both high contact, individual contact as well as contact with equipment definitely puts this at one of the higher thresholds for maintenance to keep the equipment, you know, sanitize the equipment between uses and to do one-on-one. I know that our gymnastics folks have been working diligently to prepare a reactivation plan. The, the, there is, the, the number of students, the size of classes would be smaller because we couldn't accommodate, given the social distancing requirements. But, but that's the, that's a high, over, high-level overview. If you want more specifics, we can get Derek Schweiger to answer those. Or we can bring it back.
That's good. Thanks for that, that information.
Councilmember Carlton.
Sure. I was just going to say, the city council members and, and staff have, we've discussed this so many times, I can't even count. And I've been extremely emotional about this because a lot of the, my, my children went through the gymnastics program and a lot of the teachers I've become friends with and I care about. And so I don't, I don't say this lightly. I don't bring this forward lightly. I do not want to kill our gymnastics program in any way, shape or form. I just find that there's a better way for us to structure this so that we provide a fantastic service for the residents. And we also make sure that we're physically responsible in the long term for our city. But I do not want to disrespect our gymnastics program or kill it. I want to make sure that we keep it strong and sound in the long term.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
So the gymnastics program, the savings if it's put on the cut list and it's put out to RFP is $815,000. Is that right?
So, Councilmember Mueller, the full cost of the gymnastics program for a full year is 1.1 million.
But, but there's revenue that comes in for that, right? Or is that cost includes silver revenue?
No, that is just pure cost. And then there's revenue, the current, prior to COVID-19, the revenue or the program more than offset its costs. It ran a slight surplus and contributed to other programs.
And is this a program that might also be appropriate for furloughed?
Yeah, to, yes, if we're speaking, if we're using furlough the same way, you know, clearly, as we've talked to the council a number of times on in, on this issue, we will know more. I don't know, we will know more in three months than we know today. So this may be a candidate for a temporary furlough for reevaluation at a future date, whether that be August or later into the, into the calendar year.
So it's difficult, it's difficult to say that, to, I don't see, I mean, this is like an optional program that people would be doing with their kids that I'm not sure they're going to be doing during a COVID-19 pandemic. But it ran at a surplus when it ran. So my, the other difficulty, Ken, the guys I'm having with this one is just that 11:24 at night, a public comment, a program that I think people are going to, they sent us emails on, but I think they're going to want a public comment on. So I appreciate very much where Councilmember Carlton, and I see Councilmember Nash are coming from on this, and I share concerns. Just where I'm wondering, is it, is it a, is it a, is it a furlough? Or is it a cut? So so happy to, curious where my other colleagues are on it.
And Councilmember Mueller, if I could just press you a little bit on that, what are you just, in what's your mind, what is the difference between cut and furlough? A cut is essentially saying that the, the city is moving out of this business. And at some point, is it, you know, if a third party should offer it versus furloughing the, the staff that are currently?
Yeah, a cut is saying, a cut is saying, we're getting out of this business. We're going to contract it out. A furlough is saying, we're getting out of this business for right now, but, but we're not getting out of the business yet. And we might, we might get out of the business later. We might, we might change our mind later. And then, and then cut it completely then, or we might, we might bring it back.
I think I'm supportive of, of the furlough scenario that may lead us ultimately to what Councilmember Carlton, you know, has suggested is, is best setting this program up for long-term viability. And that may very much be it. Right? I mean, if this was run by a, you know, a company, then it would have possibly been able to get a, you know, PPP loan. Right? And, and that's not something that, that was, that's available to us as, as a municipality. But given that it is so popular, given that it is not subsidized, right? It has not historically been subsidized. I, I would want to sort of, you know, again, take the furlough scenario to see how this comes back. Now, I'm, I'm thinking that it's not going to come back anytime soon to the level it was at. And that we probably would be looking at, at long-term this, this program not being run directly by the city. But, but I'm willing to give it a little time to see, see how this plays itself out.
Well, and that's why I, that's, and that's exactly why I'm thinking about furloughs because candidly, I don't know how many gymnastic programs are going to survive COVID-19 pandemic. And there was a major tax measure at Menlo Park that built that brand new gymnastics center. So it may be that we furlough and then do the study of bringing it back and, and looking at the different options of RFP for bringing it back. And we do, we're just like, oh my gosh, there's just not a service, like it's not going to be cost-effective to do a complete cut because there's no service that's going to come in and do it for, for that price. Because I don't think, I think if we, if we said the gymnastics center is going away completely, I think people would be like, oh, great. Well, that was a great, great expenditure of money billing it, guys. So, so I do think, I do, I do, but I do think it's appropriate to say, okay, these people aren't working and probably won't be working for a while. So unfortunately, in this present situation, furlough might be appropriate while we make, while we look at that.
Councilmember Carlton.
Absolutely. I, I would never suggest that we get rid of our gymnastics program. I think it's something that I'm, I'm proud of. I think most of the people in the city are. However, it's gonna be months before it comes back. And when it does, it's gonna come back a lot smaller, a lot smaller because we're gonna have rules on how many people, how many children can be per person. And it's also gonna come back because also a lot of parents aren't gonna want their children to be exposed to that in the same ways that we've discussed in, in private. So it's gonna come back in, in a much smaller form. Furlough just means cut in hours. Is that really where we wanna go with this in terms of cut of hours? And maybe this is something we wanna discuss further.
Councilmember Nash.
I guess what I'd, what I'd like to hear is what the implications are for the budget because if I'm weighing childcare versus gymnastics, there's, you know, we, to me, it's not, that's not even a discussion. So I, I would like to know how this plays out with, from the budget angle with our various decisions. Basically, I think, I believe we have to have it on the list in one form or another, which is what I think I'm hearing from everyone anyway. It's just, how does that play out? But.
So, Madam Mayor, if I, if I may.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. This is what you've identified, what the council has done effectively tonight is provided us a list, a foundation from which we can now build the city manager's proposed budget. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the council's decision is not final until you adopt the budget. So there are likely to be things that come in and come out between now and then. With regard to both childcare and gymnastics, both of those, well, childcare, we will come back with, with a standalone report for council on June nine to talk through the finances there. With gymnastics, we have the option of adding it as a potential reduction in the final budget adoption, and council can take action on that. Effectively would be what Mr. Jacobson had identified earlier as a contingency reduction. So we would say, you know, reduce the budget by one point one million. One option is gymnastics. The other option would be we would have to identify those if the council was not comfortable reducing gymnastics for either a full year or half year or whatever the appropriate time.
Mr. Piqueiro, thank you for saying that. I appreciate it. Just for clarity, the, the number of temporary employee layoffs, it's twenty-six total? Or is each line twenty-six different people? Just looking at gymnastics, line eighty-six, eighty-seven, and eighty-eight.
It's the same number. Well, it's the, the, the line number eighty, line number eighty-eight has the, it would be the most accurate line because that's for the, that's for, that's a closure for half a year. So it's twenty-six.
But it's not, it's twenty-six, so it's not a total of seventy-eight positions.
No, no.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
Why I don't wanna do those things that we said we talked about, we would talk about, I wanna make sure we talk about before that, that budget comes back, right? So we might, we might need to have another meeting to go through the list of, to be talked about. So I think that's important before that, that happens.
Could I, could I propose that we could bring it back to you on June nine with a list of those items and then you could add in or delete out? But that gives you a firmer grasp of the numbers to discuss it. We have to bring you a budget on June ninth, and we, we have to finish that early this week or, or next week, or late this week or next week. So I, or we could have, we could schedule a number of days if you want more meetings, then we can do three or four days in a row for you to discuss. We do need to adopt the budget by the end of the year.
We could do June eight, we could do, I could do another day, I can do another day that we, you guys want.
Councilmember Carlton.
Sure. According to the, the track I have roughly, we still have a lot more than six million, about six and a half million more to go to cut. And we've got eight point eight roughly that we need to discuss, which means most of the things we have to discuss, if we're gonna make this budget without pulling out of our reserves, are gonna have to come back. And I think when we say we need to discuss it, we weren't, that, this wasn't rhetorical discuss, like, we actually want to discuss it, which means we want an extra meeting, as, as Councilmember Mueller said, to, to discuss it. And if, if we need to come back next week, I'm happy to come back next week and discuss those items so that we better understand the ramifications. Because some of these we would cut, we just wanna find out what the ramifications are.
I, I guess my concern is that that won't give us enough time to prepare it for the June ninth meeting.
In items we say we want to discuss, we wanna discuss it.
Right, but I think you could discuss it in the context, we can prepare our budget based on the direction the council's given us. And then you can add or subtract and have that fuller discussion. And it gives you more tangible numbers to work with.
Okay.
That's one idea.
Councilmember Mueller.
I also wanna just say, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to using appropriate amount of reserve, and I know that Councilmember Carlton feels the same way. Just a question of what's the appropriate amount of reserve that we use? So I don't want the, it's late, and I don't want someone to look at that statement being taken out of context and say, we're not gonna use any reserve. It's just, we wanna go through due diligence through the, all of those other items to figure out how much reserve is used. I also do wanna say, and I know it got me in trouble last time, but I'm still gonna, I don't care, you know, I wish the POA would work with us to try to save some of those young cadet jobs. So I really wish they would. There's plenty of capacity in the Cola next year to work with us to save some of those cadet jobs. So, and I know that, I know we've all, we've all thought it. And that's why I asked the question tonight about the POA. So, so I wanted to say that on the record. So, anyway, I, I don't have a problem with staff preparing like a tentative budget based on what we have, as long as there's acknowledgement on all sides and within that document that we're probably gonna be adding to it.
Councilmember Nash.
So I feel strongly that we need to meet before June ninth and discuss this because look at how long it took us to do this. And I think we are all very serious about having those discussions. And it may be that we have to have a separate, that council, that staff has to continue and just develop the budget as it is, but we need to have this discussion before. And the other piece of the discussion that I would like to have is, what are we left with? We know what we're cutting. What are we left with? We need to look at the services, Starla, you and I have talked about this one before. We need to look at, for example, what does, what does, what do we have left in community services? What's left in library? What's left in community development, public works? What, how are we going to be able to respond to the EIRs that we know are coming? I want to know that we've got enough staff there, that we are making smart cuts. And are there more, but we haven't discussed a whole lot of programs that are still in community services? Is that okay? Or is there more there that really doesn't, we don't think are going to be able to come online soon? And maybe we should be looking at things that we have not yet discussed. And so I really, I would like to first go through the items that we have on discussion, but also still have a discussion of what does our city look like? How do, what do residents see when they look at our city after we've gone through this?
Well, I, and I think that's one of the reasons we wanna do a first ninety-day budget, right? I think that we can do that, but, but we can't do all of that and have another meeting next week and get the budget out. It's just not physically possible. What you're asking for to have a meeting next week, and we're already trying to have a June second meeting with the chamber. So I guess I would want direction from you. Do you want me to go back to them and ask them to defer that meeting? Because you've said earlier that you don't wanna have anything else on the agenda for that night. So i- if you want another meeting next week, we're happy to do that and discuss it. But I think what we would try and do is go ahead and work up the tentative budget that you've proposed. It's not, it's not ironed in, you can change it again, but then it gives you firmer numbers to work with. And then in the next ninety days, we can look at what, what services remain and what other adjustments will need to be made.
Based on the discussion that this evening, Starla, are there, there's layoff notices that are gonna go out tomorrow?
I think, yes, we'll need direction from the council on that as well.
So, and I actually wanted to say, I should follow up on a statement. I didn't get in trouble last time by what I said. Actually, what's happened is, I, I wanna say, I appreciate that, since I made my last statements about, about COLAs, some of the bargaining units actually are, and I'm not gonna get into the details of that, but I think we are getting, I think we are making progress. So, but, but I do wanna say, with respect to the POA, I think we could save jobs if they'd work with us. I really think we could. So.
Councilmember Carlton.
If it was so critically important that we get through this and we discuss this tonight, there should have been nothing else on the budget. There should not, been nothing else on the agenda. We wanna discuss this before we make a decision. We must discuss a lot of these things before we make a decision. Rather than having the, the staff come up with a budget for us, we must discuss these things. If, if it means we, we have a conversation with the Chamber of Commerce later, so be it. But some of these things need to be hashed out for us to better understand it. Unless you wanna have the big discussion and then we go into the budget and we, we start pulling things apart on the fly from the dais, which in my experience is always, it's, it's just not the, the best way of doing things. I don't wanna have a, a put-together budget that we then pick apart from the dais because that always gets messy. We, if we, we need to discuss these items.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And honestly, the intention for our last meeting on Fri- last Friday was to have that, that discussion. This item was the only thing on there. Unfortunately, we had a three-hour closed session. And so, so here we are, Tuesday, with, I don't know how many items are on the agenda this evening, and it's nearing midnight, and my voice is going. But that was the intention on Friday, was to only have that item because of how important it is. Councilmember Nash.
I just actually wanted to pat ourselves on the back that we actually did make it through it. And we are, you know, we do have a lot on the discussion list, but we did make it all the way through.
Actually, aren't there some items we didn't get to? Like, there is a.
I took my glasses off, Drew, for a reason.
There, there is a Freeze Assistant Public Works Director, ninety-two, at least, right? Or was that, maybe that was addressed and I, I missed it.
No, it, we didn't.
It was addressed last, it's on the, it's gotta check by it.
I, I do have actually.
Oh, yeah, dude. Okay, you're right, it has check.
Councilmember Carlton.
On the addition of CalPERS payments, A, we had an actuary come before us and tell us how ineffective, how generally bad it was to just throw money into the CalPERS pool unless there, there, we have specific areas that has to be done strategically. And we have a bucket of money that we had in surplus in previous years. Is this money not coming from the, the surplus bucket? Why is this in front of us in this budget? Why wouldn't that be coming out of the surplus bucket that we have right now if we're going to be paying down anything?
Yep. It would, it would come, if the council gives direction, continue the pay, the advanced payoff or accelerated payoff of both purse liabilities. We would take the funds this year from the strategic pension funding reserve.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't impact this budget at all because that's actually a separate bucket of funds put together to do this, this kind of thing specifically. Why would this impact our general budget?
Correct. I, I think that there, it was a concern that this money was impacting the bottom line for the general fund. And we just want it to be clear that the proposal, it is added cost that's elective and that the recommendation is to fund it using the reserve fund.
And are you putting this into the, the general pool of down? Because to explain, we had an actuary come and explain to us that if we pay things down just generally, we're just paying it into the general CalPERS pool. So we're helping Fresno as much as we're helping ourselves. And it's actually more like throwing ice cubes into a volcano unless we have a more specific area that we're paying down, as we've done previously. And when we looked into paying things down before, we were told we didn't have a specific area where it directly impacted Menlo Park significantly. Has a, a new area come up that we were unaware of three or four years ago when we discussed this? Or are we now talking about just paying into the general pool? So.
No. We would, we would never.
Why this is in front of us if it already has its own bucket to be pulled from, doesn't impact the, the general budget that we're discussing there?
So, to answer the first question, I don't, staff would not recommend making additional payments if it did not accrue to the benefit of the city. I just wanna make that clear. Second, the, there are, the city has individual liabilities by year that accrue. And I can send the council the schedule that details those liabilities and their amortization period. So this would go off to pay, this would, this money would be used to pay some, retire some of those liabilities in full or in part. And then, again, the reason this is included is there was concern that we were taking general fund money to pay this. We wanted to be clear that we are not using general fund operating money, we're using general fund surplus effectively from prior years, if the council elects to go that path.
Big bucket created for this. And if, if I'm, memory serves me, we have about five million dollars in it because I remember one year we put three in, in that year alone.
Yeah. Yes, but, but, but staff cannot take the money.
It's a specific bucket created for this. Why is this being accounted for in the general?
Because we are not authorized by city council policy to expend money from reserves without city council action.
All right, I just think it's confusing putting it there, but I'll let Councilmember Mueller ask further questions.
I think it's important, Kat, that you get your, your answer, your questions answered about that. So I appreciate your reasoning with Nick. I appreciate you providing staff's, staff's reasoning behind it. My comment is more of an apology. I have, I have hit the wall. I'm like, I'm at the wall. So, I really am. I'm not.
You.
I can't, I can't go further. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, and Kat, I really appreciate where you're, where you're coming from on that. So I'm not, it's not a, it's not a reflection on your questions at all. So I think it's really important that we get that ironed out. It's a lot of money. It's a one point eight million dollar addition to it. So I don't want you to feel like I didn't, I wasn't backing you upon what, where your questions were. I just, I am tired. So.
So this, this is a, to be continued?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Carlton. This is a, to be continued, because I actually have some follow-up questions along with Councilmember Carlton's question. But I will remember them so we can start from there. And we will figure out when our next meeting is. And the last thing I'm gonna do now is try to figure that out. So I will say a good night to everyone. Thank you for your time, your commitment, and your input, and I will see you soon. Good night.
Thank you to staff.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys, we, I know we ask tough questions because we have to, but we appreciate the hard work we've done and we respect what you're doing.
And all the data support.
Yeah. Ditto, ditto. Good night.